Hello.
I'm just cheering here, but I'm telling you. My back won't hurt, but maybe that'll work.
All the Woman Dells, I know you had problems the last time. If you click on Participants and chat, you'll be able to see the raise your hand area. So，请 participants and then chat for it to be over to the side and make sure it's on speaker view.
I got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Elise.
Is somebody coming?
That was me. I just said hi.
Hi, Michael.
Fran.
Yes.
Can you confirm whether the mayor is coming or not so we can call the meeting in order?
This is Dorothy White Coleman. It is my understanding that the mayor and Alderwoman Tatman are at a previously called meeting with some citizens. And then they'll all be attending this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The emergency board of Alderman meeting will be called order at 7:00 PM, 7:01 PM. Roll call, Fran, please.
Alderwoman West.
Present.
Alderwoman Tatman is absent. Alderwoman Reed.
Present.
Alderman Carroll.
Present.
Alderman Thomas. Where he go? Alderman Thomas. I know he was here. Alderman Christian.
Here.
Alderwoman Dales. You're muted, Elise. Alderwoman Avante Elliott.
Present.
Okay, Elise, you didn't say anything. You're muted. Okay. Oh, the mayor is absent. City clerk is here. The city attorney is here. Chief, are you here?
Alderman Thomas, my phone went out.
Okay, I got you. You have to say present so it can be on the recorder.
Present.
What? I was talking to Elise.
Oh.
Okay, at this time, we will have the approval of the agenda and the explanation of the emergency board meeting.
Avante Elliott. Before, before you proceed, this is Dorothy White Coleman. I have a point of order. Was there at least 24 hours notice posted regarding this meeting as required by Section 610.020 of the Sunshine Law?
As attorney, you do not have, you're not allowed to have a point of order. And we have an emergency meeting that we called, and so we are proceeding through an emergency. And when the agenda is approved, a statement will be made.
Excuse me, as the attorney representing the city, it is indeed my duty and obligation to advise you of the law so that you will stay within the bounds of the law. So my question is whether or not this meeting has been lawfully, lawfully called.
And I'm saying that as our attorney, we're not asking for you to inquire of that. You have properly advised us by asking a question, and we are proceeding on as we had this, this meeting called via email and no discussion was made pertaining to your concern. So we are proceeding on. Thank you.
Excuse me.
My statement is that the Sunshine Law requires 24 hours notice of a meeting.
Not in the case of emergency.
Unless there is an emergency or good cause justifying departure.
Yes, and that's what we're doing. That's what we're doing. Thank you.
Excuse me, Alderman. James Carroll, Alderman Carroll has had his hand raised.
Alderman Carroll, please proceed.
Yes, I would like to move that the board have a finding for good cause per Chapter 10.020. Two of the revised statutes of Missouri require discussing why we're having this meeting and putting it on the record with less than a 24-hour notice. So I would need to...
Can I get a second, please?
My hand is up.
Alderwoman Reed, second.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Alderwoman Dales.
Okay, you have to call for the question that's been moved and seconded.
I have a question.
Yes, it's been moved and properly seconded that the meeting is being called to order on the basis of emergency on the question.
My hand is up.
Alderwoman Dales.
Okay, the meeting was not posted 24 hours to notice. It did not state what the emergency was. Therefore, this is an illegal meeting. And we should, as elected officials, listen to the attorney. Therefore, there won't be any type of legal ramification for those participating in the meeting. And that is why I'm on here. We should listen to the attorney because the meeting was only posted. You sent the email to Fran at 6:00 PM yesterday when she was off work. When Fran may have gotten to work, she may have been able to post it. Everyone in this, in this city is not on social media. It should be put out so the citizens have an opportunity, if they choose to, to get on this meeting. Therefore, this is an illegal meeting, and it should not be happening. And we should always refer to our attorney who is giving us legal advice.
Do we have any further discussion?
I have my hand raised.
Okay, Alderman Thomas.
Yeah.
Can all other participants please lower your hands so I can properly identify individuals in order? Alderman Thomas.
Yes, I too was not notified within 24 hours of this meeting, nor was I informed of why this meeting was being called. I think that the citizens need to be aware of all meetings per ordinances that occur when the business of the city is taking place. Again, the, the, from what I could see in the email, it was sent out at 6:00. Nothing was sent out until 8:00 this morning. And I agree that we should listen to our attorney because at the end of the day, when we do have a, a problem, we're going to be leaning and depending on her to get us out of it. And that is all that I have to say right now.
Is there any further discussion?
I do.
Alderman Carroll.
Yeah, the reason why we're having it a 24, without a 24-hour notice is because members of this board have, in the past couple of weeks, tried to get things placed on the agenda. And the mayor will not allow those items to be placed on the agenda. And consequently, some issues that we need to be discussing for the city to be more efficient in its, its management and how we conduct ourselves and do business as a board.
Okay, Alderwoman Dales, okay, your hand is still up. Alderwoman Dales.
Yeah, I want to know where the public notice was put because I went up to City Hall today and it was not there.
It was placed on the website as is the other meeting.
Okay, it was not placed in City Hall. And it is not fair to the citizens that every one of us represent. It should have been posted in City Hall because everyone is not on computers. Again, it's not 24-hour notice. It wasn't placed on, at City Hall. And everyone doesn't have access to the computer. And we need to serve the people, not our own agenda. It's not fair that we put it on the computer so those in my ward who don't have a computer, who could come up to City Hall, could read it. It's not fair to them, and it still is not 24-hour notice. And I might want, I want to say that the city clerk should have stated that before she put it on this, on the agenda and the website because it was not 24-hour notice. And she should be aware of that.
She should have stated.
Alderwoman West.
I call for the question.
Yes, ma'am.
That means all discussion stops and we vote.
All right, all right, we will proceed with the voting on the motion to move that the board have a finding for good cause per Chapter 16.02, Section 2, Revised Statutes of Missouri Statutes. All in favor, say aye.
Was it seconded? Did I second it?
It was seconded. It was properly seconded, yes.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None opposed? At this time, I would like to request, because of the business, I will be conducting. Alderman Christian. Alderman Christian.
Yeah.
Could you please take over as chair of the meeting because I have business items to conduct?
You'll have to give me a moment. I'm doing this on my phone. I don't have a computer readily able to be able to have the agenda for me.
Point of order.
Yes.
We need to approve the agenda now, I believe.
Yes, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
This is Alderwoman West. I move to approve the agenda for the emergency meeting on today, Wednesday, August 12, 2020.
Can I get a second? Let me see any hands up. Okay. All right, Alderman Christian has properly seconded for the question or debate. With no further discussion, I would like to move for, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so, I'm sorry. All right, the motion has been proved, approved, so we are moving forth with our agenda. Jim, Christian, are you available to move as the chair or James Carroll, would you like to switch? I would like to ask that James Carroll conduct the meeting once I get to the section related to the attorney services. So I will maintain my position as chair until after the resolutions are complete. At this time, we will have public comment for three minutes each. Please stay within that timeline. If you would like to provide a comment, please remember to state your name and your address for the city clerk. Thank you.
This is Wanda Lane at 9900 Block of Martindale. I too had some concerns about the legality of the meeting. I talked with the attorney at Missouri Attorney General's Office, spoke with an attorney, James Klaahr, K-L-A-H-R, and explained to him my concerns. So he said it depended on the reason why, and I was, I just wrote down, tried to place, I think, on the agenda that the mayor would not allow. So that's...
Oh, wow.
I mean, I may be, I may be summarizing, but that's pretty much what he said. So that took me to the municipal league. And I had a conversation with a Mr. Pat Kelly. According to Mr. Kelly, the agenda is set by the mayor. So that kind of meets that. And then I had concerns about these resolutions. And he told me pretty much, he already had a copy of it, don't know how. But I wanted to know what would happen in the event that the mayor does not comply with these, or these resolutions. And his response to me was pretty much nothing. They're not very, there's no legality involved in it. So when you guys decide that you want to actually do something to help the citizens improve our lives, then that would be helpful to us. But the, the fans, the words are nicely written. Had a very long conversation with Mr. Kelly. But it was his opinion that they didn't mean very much. They're unenforceable, let's just say that. So on that note, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. For the next public comment, please.
Yeah, this is CJ from 9, CJ Mayberry from 920 Fontaine Place. My phone kind of went out when the Alder person was giving the good calls for the emergency meeting. Can he restate it if possible? It is in the chat.
It is?
Let me see. No, I don't see. Well, he indicated that it was as a result of important agenda items not being placed on the agenda and business needing to take forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, is there any other questions? Okay, any other persons from the public that would like to give a comment at this time?
Yes, I would. I'm Ebony Williams from 10,008 Coburg Land. Um, one of my biggest issues was of the situation that happened with the officer in Belle Fountain buying the cocaine and smoking it and finding out that it was seen all the overdosing. I wanted to know what ramifications was taken towards the officer, if any at all. And what's going on with the investigation and how are we holding the police department accountable?
Mrs. Williams, just to answer your question, with the illegal meeting that took place last Thursday, the chief indicated that the officer chose to resign, but they were continuing on with the investigation despite that person's voluntary resignation and that they were looking at some type of process for regular drug testing. Is there any other public comment at this time?
Yes, does that mean that he will be allowed to work at other municipalities?
We are uncertain with that. We have not had a close session in order to discuss those items. And I'm not sure if chief is on the call. Is Chief Eiler on this call? Okay, you may have to ask at tomorrow's board meeting that's at 7:00.
Okay.
All right, any other public comment at this time? Being there is no public comment. Okay.
It's still Ebony. I wanted to know, I heard something about a resolution and I kind of clicked in the call kind of late. Can you tell me what resolution you guys actually were discussing?
Okay, so the resolutions are on the website. So if you're able to go to the city of BM while you're on the call, if you click on the meeting for today, there is an addendum that has all the resolutions on there. So there are three resolutions that's included on the current agenda. And we will be going over those items once the public comment is concluded. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, at this time, I would like to turn it over to Alderman Carroll for the first red, well, I'm sorry, for Alderwoman West for new business, the Resolution 2020-03 to St. Louis County Municipal Parks Grant.
My hand is up, is up.
We're, we're, we just finished a pop, public comment, and so then once the...
This, this is Alderwoman Dales.
Uh huh. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, as the Alderwoman award for, I would like to make an objection to this meeting because it is an illegal meeting and I want to note it.
Point of order.
I want to note it for the record that this is an illegal meeting.
So, Westland State's dear.
So are you, are you making a motion, Alderwoman Dales? What is your motion?
What I'm, what I'm stating is that I object to this meeting because it is illegal. And I want to state it for the record. And thank you very much for acknowledging.
Okay, you're welcome. All right, Alderwoman West with Resolution 2020-03.
Okay, so I will try to make this brief, and I will read it for the public's knowledge. St. Louis County Municipal Park Grant Resolution. Whereas the Belle Fountain Neighbors Missouri Board of Aldermen deems it necessary to improve a park facility or special or specifically Belle Fountain Neighbors Recreation Center Outdoor Pool to serve its citizens as well as those in the metropolitan area. Now therefore be it resolved by the Belle Fountain Neighbors Missouri Board of Aldermen as follows. Number one, an application be made to the Municipal Park Grant Program in the county of St. Louis for a grant in kind, for a grant in aid for some of our, for some of all of the cost of the project. reimbursable by the commission upon completion of the city. That a project, I'm sorry, that a project proposal be prepared and submitted to the Municipal Park Grant Commission. The governing body hereby authorizes to sign and execute the necessary documents for forwarding the project proposal application and later execute an agreement for a grant in aid from the Municipal Park Commission. If a grant is awarded, the city of Belle Fountain Neighbors will enter into an agreement or contract with the commission regarding said grant.
Is there a second?
I also want to make a note that two or three months ago, I made aware to the board, the entire board, that I was willing to incur the cost of the grant writing, which is $3,500. So I've already paid half of that, and the other half will be paid upon completion of the resolution. Thank you.
Can I get a second?
I moved that this resolution be entered into.
Christian, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Well, you can't have another discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry, for the question at this time.
I'll raise my, I'll raise my hand.
Alderwoman Dales.
Alderman Thomas, I'm sorry, had his hand up first.
Alderman Thomas, do you have your, is your name listed as the LGK 30? Fran, would you mind correcting his name on, on the Zoom so we can properly recognize him? I wasn't certain. Alderman Thomas, please proceed. I apologize.
Thank you. This is, due to the fact that this is an illegal meeting, was not called properly, this resolution cannot be voted on nor can be passed. That is my statement.
Alderwoman Dales.
Um, yes, I would like to state as Alderwoman Dales Award for, I am objecting to the resolution into this meeting because it is invalid.
Are there any additional debates or questions? Alderman Thomas, can you lower your hand or do you have an additional question or debate? Please, Alderman, Alderman, okay, thank you. Is there any other questions or debates at this time? All right, at this time, we will move to take a vote on the passing of the Resolution 2020-03. Can you please mute individuals, Fran? You should be able to see their mics in motion in the participant area. So Tracy's, Tracy's, yes, thank you.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Fran, will you please conduct a roll call vote at this time?
Alderwoman West.
Yes.
Alderwoman Reed.
Yes.
Alderman Carroll.
Yes.
Alderman Thomas.
No.
Alderman Christian.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dales.
She left.
Oh, Alderwoman Avante Elliott.
Yes.
Okay.
And it has been moved and properly seconded for the resolution to go into action. So we will move to the next resolution, which is Resolution 2020-05. Alderman Carroll.
Um, hold on. I would, I would like to move that the board adopt Resolution 2020-04, a resolution of the city of Belle Fountain Neighbors Missouri censuring Mayor Tommy Pearson Senior. Whereas the Board of Aldermen desires to take a public stance and formally express its disdain for Mayor Tommy Pearson in judicious conduct, mismanagement of city operations, and violation of city orders. Whereas his conduct has interfered with the Board of Aldermen performing their legislative duties. Whereas his conduct has been detrimental to the effective management of the day-to-day functioning of the city. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of Belle Fountain Neighbors Missouri as follows. Section 1, the Board of Aldermen assembled in open session and by a vote of the majority of its members have found that Mayor Tommy Pearson Senior has engaged in the following, A, board relation.
Order before you keep going. Are you, are you on 2020-04 or 2020-05?
He's reading 05. It, it seems to me he's reading 04.
Okay, so according to the agenda, let me, let me just pull it up. Fran, could you indicate which one, I think maybe the order that switched?
They did get switched, looked like when, when they were sent to me, but I, I changed them back the way it should be. 04 should be the conduct to govern the citizens' conduct. Oh four should be the conduct to govern uh the, the citizens' conduct in the public meetings. Um, just like it was from the last um meeting that we had, that was 2020 oh four. So that would have made the censuring become 2020 oh five. But I can change it before they're put, you know, you can go ahead and let this one be oh four and I'll switch the other one to oh five.
No, we, we'll, we'll, we'll keep the order that's on the agenda because we have not amended it because of that. I know that it was sent as a oh four and so that may be how he read it. So if we can.
Withdraw my motion.
Okay. Um, if you, if you can proceed with oh four and then you can move on to the next.
Oh four, so. Let me go ahead.
I would like for you to pull that agenda up because mine is reading different. I don't know why it's different. Never mind, go on. My hand is up after the reading, if that's okay.
I move that the board adopt Resolution 2020 dash four, a resolution of the City of Belle Fountain Neighbors Missouri, adopting a code of conduct to govern citizen conduct at public meetings. Um, whereas it is the goal of the City of Belle Fountain Neighbors Missouri, the city, to provide for meetings where the public's business can be efficiently conducted in an open and orderly manner and in an environment that is safe for all persons in attendance in order to facilitate open debate of public policy issues and an atmosphere of fairness, courtesy, and respect for differing points of view. Whereas it is the city's best interest to adopt policies and procedures relative to the conduct of members of the public attending meetings of the city, Board of Alderpersons and/or Committees and to implement such policies and procedures to help achieve this go, goal. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Alderpersons of the City of Belle Fountain Neighbors Missouri as follows. Section one, the Board of Alderpersons hereby approves and adopts the Code of Conduct for members of the public attending Board of Alderpersons and/or Committee meetings as set forth in Exhibit A attached here too. In section two, that this resolution shall be in full force in effect from and after its passage.
Can I have a second? On the motion to um adopt Resolution 2020 dash oh four, a resolution of a City of Belle Fountain Neighbors Missouri adopting a code of conduct to govern the citizen conduct at public meetings.
Alderwoman Reed, seconds.
Okay, for the question and debate. Alderwoman Dales.
Um, I would like to state that this meeting is illegal and where's the public? Did anyone relate this information to the public? Has the citizens had input on this?
No.
What if? This is Alderwoman West. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not finished. I am not finished. Okay, well, you, you hesitated a long time, so okay. I am not finished. Okay, the citizens have not been informed that the board is, that certain members of the board is doing this. They should have been given ample information. They should have been notified, wh- why? Because most of these items that are on this agenda is not fair. Most of this stuff is personal. Some of the things that may go on, instead of us trying to impeach or censor, the mayor should be tried to be helped, given advice, allowed to be able to run the city, allowed to be able to serve the citizens. Instead of being subject to the things that are in this illegal meeting, it is unfair. We work for the citizens of Belle Fountain Neighbors. It is not our right to have a personal agenda against any one of us. And this is wrong and the citizens should be known.
Make the meeting illegal because I do want to know that.
The citizens, um.
Um, participants, please remain muted as um when we're conducting business, um you don't have an opportunity to engage with the Alderman at that time. Thank you.
The citizens, the, the citizens have a right to know. They voted the mayor in. They should not, their, their um their voices should be heard. We represent them and what they want, not our agenda. And I have to say this, I hate to call names, but we know that the president of the board wants to be the mayor. More than anything.
Point of order, point of order.
But I'm stating.
I'm recognizing your point of order, um Alderman Carroll.
Okay, so therefore it's still out of order.
According to Roberts rules, we shouldn't be calling out people's names in, in board meetings.
According to the citizens, Jamie. We, I serve, I serve the citizens, not you. Point of order.
Point of order.
Point of order. I serve the citizens. You don't, you're not, you're not allowing the citizens to, to have anything to do with this meeting, this illegal meeting.
Point of order, uh, Alderwoman Avant Elliott.
I'm ruling that we continue from this um inappropriate communication and engagement at this time and I'm moving on to Alderman Thomas who has his hand up. Alderman Thomas?
He's muted.
All right. Alderwoman West? Alderwoman West, your hand is raised.
But she's muted.
Okay.
Um, so I had wanted to respond to the Alderwoman's um comments about the public not having enough time. Apparently they did if one citizen was able to call the Attorney General, call the Municipal League, et cetera, et cetera. Apparently there was plenty of time. Uh, that person also knew exactly what was on the agenda probably before we did. So um I just wanted to make that uh comment.
Okay, is there any further questions or debate? Alderman, Alderman Thomas?
Yes.
Please lower your hand once you finish your comment. Thank you.
Yeah, I will. This is Alderman Thomas. I represent the uh third ward. And again, this meeting is illegal. The uh, it, it, it's, it appears to be that no help is being given, only antagonistic behavior toward what has occurred. And we need to help each other. We were voted in by the citizens. The mayor was voted in by the citizen. He was elected. He was not appointed. And by calling this meeting and continuing on with this meeting, you, you are doing the citizens great harm and that is all I have to say right now.
Thank you. We were on the question of adopting uh citizen conduct, uh code of conduct for the public. Is there any other question and debate related to that resolution? Being there are no further questions or debate.
Can we have a roll call vote?
Yes, um Fran, would you conduct the roll call vote at this time, please?
Yes, Alderwoman West.
Yes.
Alderwoman um Reed.
Yes.
Alderman Carroll.
Yes.
Alderman Thomas.
No.
Alderman Christian.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dales. Alderwoman Avant Elliott.
Yes. At this time, we will move forward to um section resolution. Okay. Okay.
Then we call them.
It has been moved and properly second that the board will be adopting Resolution 2020 dash oh four, a resolution of the City of Belle Fountain Neighbors Missouri adopting a code of conduct to govern citizen conduct at public meetings. At this time, can we move to uh Resolution 2020, um Alderman Carroll?
I move that the board adopt Resolution 2020 dash five, a resolution of the City of Belle Fountain Neighbors censuring Mayor Tommy Pearson Senior. Whereas the Board of Aldermen desires to take a public stance and formally express its disdain for Mayor Tommy Pearson Senior, seniors in judicious conduct, mismanagement of city operations, and violations of city ordinances. Whereas this conduct has interfered with the Board of Aldermen performing their legislative duties. Whereas this conduct has been detrimental to the effective management of the day-to-day functioning of the city. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Belle Fountain Neighbors Missouri as follows. Section one, the Board of Aldermen assembled an open session and by a vote of the majority of its members have found that Mayor Tommy Pearson Senior has engaged in the following. A, board relations and meeting of the Board of Aldermen. The majority of the Board of Aldermen finds that Tommy Pearson Senior conducts himself in an unprofessional manner and lacks effective communication as evidenced by the following. One, fails to facilitate board meetings using Roberts Rules of Order eleventh edition, which impedes the Board of Aldermen's ability to make and adopt motions made and pass resolutions and ordinances. Two, does not provide communication to the board and rarely responds to requests or follow-up inquiries from the Board of Aldermen, which hampers the Board of Aldermen's decision-making abilities. Three, fails to attend most special meetings called by the Board of Aldermen in his capacity as city administrator, which prevents the Board of Aldermen from having sufficient information of the day-to-day operations of the city to make informed decisions regarding city business. Four, makes verbal attacks toward board members and appointed staff within and outside board meetings. Five, directs the city clerk to cancel Board of Aldermen meetings and give directives in violation of city ordinance. Six, failed to begin and or complete annual strategic plan per ordinance to give effective direction for the city. B, personnel. The majority of the Board of Aldermen finds that Mayor Tommy Pearson Senior lacks effective management of human resources as evidenced by the following. One, does not provide day-to-day management of the city, leaving staff with little to no supervision and direction concerning operations. Two, approved recreation staff person salary increase via verbal approval that was not board-approved. Three, fails to facilitate hiring processes to fill essential city positions, leaving city departments with little to no designated leadership outside of the mayor who does not maintain a regular work schedule. Four, failed to make commission appointments as requested and approved by the board. Five, hired individual for a position that was not vacant and has not complied with the board decision made during closed session. Six, hired staff at higher rates of pay without the Board of Aldermen's approval. Seven, allowed elected officials to direct staff, which is a violation of state statute and city ordinance. C, health and safety. The majority of the Board of Aldermen finds that Mayor Tommy Pearson Senior fails to maintain the health and safety of the city as evidenced by the following. One, failed to manage COVID-19 cases in si- the city and properly sanitize workspaces. Two, failed to provide all departments with PPE equipment, cleaning supplies, and safety protocols. Three, failed to direct maintenance contractor to complete regular cleaning of facilities resulting in city workers completing these tasks. D, finances and resources. The majority of the Board of Aldermen finds that Tommy Pearson Senior lacks effective management of finances and resources as evidenced by the following. One, mismanagement, mismanaged city's budget as it relates to salaries and accounts payable. That is hiring employees at higher steps than Board of Aldermen approved, late bill payment, et cetera. Two, failed to facilitate an RFP process with several large purses, purchases resulting in the Board of Aldermen having to approve these purchases on an emergency basis and thereby failing to allow for competitive bidding. Three, authorized the use of city property and utilities by carnival workers for a carnival held at the mayor's church without board approval. Four, uses the city vehicle in violation of the city's vehicle take-home policy and against board approval. Five, allowed an elected official to host a weekly event on city property without hold harmless documentation for several weeks, which could have resulted in the city's insurance increasing. Six, failed to manage the city's donation policy regarding donated masks. Section two, Mayor Tommy Pearson Senior is hereby directed to A, board relations and meeting of the Board of Aldermen, increases professionalism by engaging with the board and city staff in a professional manner, refraining from aggressive communication, regularly attending special board meetings and responding to bo- board requests in a timely manner. B, adhere to Roberts Rules of Order when sharing meetings of the Board of Aldermen and to conduct himself in a decorious manner and if unable to do so voluntarily remove himself as the chair. C, adhere to board-approved agenda items, requests, and ordinances. D, fulfill the responsibilities outlined in Chapter Two, Administration, Article Three, Officers and Employees, Division Two, City Administrator. B, personnel. Immediately fill all city budget-approved vacancies using proper hiring practices and seeking board approval when required. B, make nominations for vacancies to all city commissions and/or boards by September third, 2020 for Board of Aldermen approval. C, monitor the day-to-day operations of the city by setting a regular work schedule. D, redirect elected officials found directing staff in violation of ordinance or using city property and resources without authorization and report to the collective board as necessary. E, fulfill board requests concerning personnel decisions made in closed sessions in a timely manner. C, health and safety. Secure resources and supplies and proper cleaning surfaces immediately to maintain the health and safety of the workers. D, finances and resources. A, maintain compliance with all city policies relating to purchasing, accounts payable, insurances, and distributions, and use of resources, and timely payment of bills. B, adhere to take-home vehicle policy. E, training. Review and complete the three-hour Roberts Rule of Order virtual training conducted by Dr. Lynn Young. B, review and complete the one-hour How to Avoid Being Burnt by the Sunshine Law virtual training offered as a webinar by the Municipal, Missouri Municipal League. C, complete ten hours, ten additional hours of training by August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one regarding topics related to personnel, budgeting, health and safety, finance, et cetera, often, offered by the Missouri Municipal League. D, seek peer mon- mentoring for guidance related to city management and board relations. Section three, Mayor Tommy Pearson will receive upon approval of the majority of the Board of Aldermen, articles impeachment after violation of any part of this resolution. Now, section four, now therefore in consideration of the foregoing recitals, the majority of the publicly elected members of the Board of Belle Fountain Neighbors Board of Aldermen hereby adopts this resolution, resolution censuring Mayor Tommy Pearson Senior for his violation of the city's ordinances and other misconduct cited above. This resolution shall become effective immediately upon its passage.
Can I get a second? I see um. Alderwoman Dales, oh, you call him for a second?
For discussion.
Okay, Alderwoman West?
Second.
Okay, for the question and debate. Alderwoman Dales.
I'm calling for a discussion. Uh, first, let me indicate that all of this is illegal and I object to everything that was read. Um, also, I would like to state that every other person that did sign the sheet that was sent with the agenda, that discrimination charges be filed by the City of Belle Fountain Neighbors because the previous mayor who did most of these things were never, never brought up on census. So that's discrimination. Also, I want to indicate that the people have not been involved. The people are the ones who we represent, not our personal agenda. We do not speak for the people. The people should have been brought in. They should have been told what these charges were, what these censuses are. It should have been discussed with the public in every ward. And it's not fair to the citizens that who pay our salaries, who sees that we sit in. It is not fair to our citizens. It is not, I'm not finished.
No, I'm, I'm just asking, before you proceed, do you have anything that is for or against that particular uh motion? Is there, is there a pro?
Everything that I said is ag- is, is not for the, what was read. It is not for it.
Do you have, do you have a counter debate that says?
That is, I am countering my debate. I am countering on behalf of the citizens of Belle Fountain Neighbors. I am countering on behalf of the citizens of Belle Fountain Neighbors. Okay, the people who we represent. They did not have a chance, they don't even, most of the people in this neighborhood does not even know what's going on. They're not on social media, they have a life. They, there was no, there was no 24-hour notice. I object to all this illegal stuff, it is not fair, it is not fair to the citizens. And that's my discussion, that's what I'm stating. They brought us here to do the work for them, a lot of the things that were stated on them serviced them. So why should we be going against things that service them? People were grateful for the mask during this pandemic. Okay, everybody has a way of doing things, we cannot put what we want to do, we have to give individuals time. And that's what we should be doing, we should be servicing the citizens of the city of Belle Fountain Neighbors and not with our personal agenda. And this is an illegal meeting, and that's what I'm saying for right now.
Alderman Christian, I mean Alderman Thomas at this time.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. This is Alderman Thomas, Third Ward. This resolution that is being put forth is discriminatory and should not ever have been created, but it has. And by creating this resolution, you have shown, or who, the ones who signed it, who have shown that they are not, they don't have the well-being of the citizens of the city of Belle Fountain. Because the mayor was elected by the citizens, and if anything was to be done against the mayor, it should have been brought forth to the citizens, not through some resolution that's gonna cause someone to, by this resolution be fired, which it can't happen anyway. And there should be a two-thirds majority, I believe, in order to remove the mayor from his office, whether it be through impeachment or whether it be by him, by this even being approved. Again, this meeting is not legal, it was not called with the process that is supposed to be called. And right now, that is all I have to say. Thank you.
I'm seeing no further hands.
Excuse me.
Alderman Dales, or you?
Yeah, I do, I have, I do, I do have one other comment. I would like to declare that this resolution is out of order. And as previously stated, all of my comments, it is out of order.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
This is Dorothy White Coleman, the city attorney again.
Proceed, please.
Given the gravity of this situation, I feel duty-bound to say something. A motion to censure the mayor or any public official is not to be taken lightly. It is a very serious matter. Due process requires that the mayor should have had notice, adequate notice, so that he could have been here to answer to the allegations in this resolution. He was not afforded that opportunity because adequate notice was not given. Additionally, the citizens of this city have a vital interest in this resolution. As has been stated, they elected the mayor, they put him in office. So clearly, they have an interest, and they were not given at least 24 hours so that they can be a part of this proceeding. So I say that to say that you proceed being duly put on notice regarding the concerns about this matter.
Thank you, Alderman Carroll.
I would, I would just like to point out that we were also elected, everybody on this board has been elected, nobody's been appointed, and we also have a duty when, when we see something going on or we see something that is an issue. I absolutely do not take this lightly. This, I understand that this is a very serious charge of position that we're taking, but from what I have witnessed and what I've been reading in previous BOA meeting minutes, this has been an ongoing, these have been ongoing issues, board members have been bringing this up to the mayor's attention. Since I've, I've been on the board, I really truly have a problem with him removing things that we have decided to place on the agenda, that we've requested to be replaced on the agenda. As I stated in numerous emails, there's potential that if he doesn't like something, that he could just not place it on the agenda and it never can come up for a vote. Additionally, I was able to, to review the, the meeting from, from the, the last BOA and I forgot where I was going, but, so yes, I understand the, the, oh, the, when the motion was made to amend the, the agenda and properly seconded, the mayor did not allow for it to come up for a vote. So this type of interference with the duties and responsibilities of the Board of Aldermen have, has, in the past week or two, has been becoming more progressively restricting us in fulfilling those duties. When you, when you don't allow something to be coming up for proper vote, debate, and questions by the Board of Aldermen, that's, that's for the Board of Aldermen to discuss. If it was an illegal motion, then that's, that's where the Board of Aldermen discuss that, to debate it, and then the, the Board votes on it. It's a, the, the, the majority of the Board is, 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 is what, what dictates the, whether something passes or whether something fails. It's not one person not allowing things to come on the agenda or allowing things that have been properly moved and seconded to not come before vote.
I have another comment. I have. Just a minute. Alderman, Alderman Dales, Alderman Dales is, has her hand up to make a comment.
Point of order, during debate, you only get two comments.
Okay, how many have you had, Alderman Dales? I think this is our second one. Okay.
This is the first one.
Okay, do you have anything different, Alderman Dales?
I do, I do, and this is respond to Alderman Carroll.
Point of order, I need, I need a ruling on that. Alderman has already spoken twice to this issue.
So you're speaking, this your third time?
She's beginning to speak for a third time.
He's doing a point of order, I have to recognize that. I will allow her last comment, Alderman Carroll. Alderman Dales.
This is in response to Alderman Carroll. Alderman Carroll, since you've been on the board, have you ever?
Alderman can't be calling people's names, we've already.
You have to address me, Alderman Dales. What is it that you want, that you want directed to him?
Okay, directly, directed to the last comment. Have you asked to help the mayor? Have you talked to your citizens about these issues? Have you done everything that you can to assist the Board, the mayor, and the citizens before taking an illegal meeting? Have you done everything? And at the same time, when, if the mayor, the mayor is the chair, he has a right to look out for the citizen. When the items are placed on the agenda, which can take us four or five hours, shouldn't we have respect for the citizens that come to the meeting? Shouldn't we have a meeting for at least an hour or less instead of keeping them on the, in a board meeting for four or five hours? Don't we care about the people that we serve? We have, we have had numerous things placed on the agenda that can take us four or five hours. Don't we have, don't we want to consider our citizens? We have meetings twice a month, they can go in rotating order. And what I asked the mayor to do, and also I had asked the city clerk last year to do a rotation, a rotation of each ward. We can always come to an agreement to do some things, but we don't have to go to the extent of what, well, things don't have to be brought to the extent of where it is now. But there should always be a rotation. Every ward should have a chance to put something on board along with the city, have a chance, each other person should have a chance to, to open up the meeting, it should all go in rotation. And I asked the city clerk to do that as the, the previous city clerk did, so it would be fair. So I think that maybe we should come and sit down in a meeting and discuss some of the things to make it better for the citizens, so we can have their best interest always.
Alderman Thomas.
When we had the last Board of Aldermen meeting, agenda items were trying to be placed after the mayor had already set the agenda. The, out of, out of respect for the citizens and anyone who takes their time to come to the meetings, I don't think we should be having meetings of, of over two hours. And I believe that's where the mayor is headed with us as our chair and as our leader. We need to have what has already been suggested, that we have a, a retreat moment, that we have a moment where we can all come together, we can get this all together, because again, we are elected officials, we represent the citizens of the city of Belle Fountain, the cities of, the citizens of the city of Belle Fountain, and trust us to take care of their business as elected officials. And to not go to the citizens prior to creating rules, laws, resolutions that are detrimental to the operations of the city of Belle Fountain is not what we should be doing. And I heard the attorney trying to chime in, I don't know if she has a hand raised in this, but if you could recognize her, I don't know if you heard her, Madam Chair. And that is all I have to say for right now.
Thank you, no, her hand was not raised. Attorney, do you have any legal guidance to provide at this time?
Yes, I, I did want to say to Alderman Carroll, I certainly understand the position you take, and I understand the points that you made. However, taking this action on less than 24 hours' notice and not giving the mayor the opportunity to be here and address these allegations, you're not affording him the due process he's entitled to, nor are the citizens being afforded the opportunity to be here and hear what's going on in these proceedings. So it doesn't make it right because of the concerns that you've indicated. There's still a requirement that we all abide by the law. That's the only point I wanted to make.
Attorney, I would like to engage you in a question at this time. For last Thursday's meeting, when Alderman Carroll indicated that there was no quorum, what, what should have happened per sunshine law?
No public business should have been conducted, and it was not.
Based on?
No public business conducted.
Based on?
No votes were taken, nothing.
Based on the video of the meeting, there were reports made from commissions, the mayor, the chief, and a motion to adjourn the meeting. And there was not a single person, once Alderman Carroll exited the meeting, that advised the mayor that he was indeed violating the sunshine law when the quorum was no longer there. That is a concern.
Alderman, Alderman Lee, no votes were taken after Alderman Carroll notified the mayor that he did not have a quorum. Only informational reports were given.
In their city business, and there was a motion to adjourn the meeting that was done and, and recorded, so.
Well, I, I beg to differ with you on that. Reports informational were given, and I agree with you that that was a part of the agenda. However, that has occurred on other occasions. No votes, however, were taken, and I agree with you that there was a motion made to adjourn the meeting, but that was to conclude the meeting, it was not to conduct city business.
Yes, okay. It is being referred to the Attorney General Office. Alderman Reed, at this time, please proceed.
I thank you for bringing it up because Attorney White Coleman has attended what used to be called the Strategic Planning Meetings, and she has more than once commented that you do not have a quorum to have this meeting. And I've noted to her before we had our sunshine training and our Robert's Rule of Order training that we don't vote on anything here, we just talk, we just discuss. And she said, you can't have this meeting unless you have a quorum. That has been spoken by the city attorney, White Coleman, at least three times since she's been appointed as city attorney at the, used to be called Strategic Train, Strategic Planning Meetings. So when I looked at the recording of the meeting, it was stated by Alderman Carroll that you don't have a quorum, and there was never, never a statement by the attorney, White Coleman, that, Mayor, you need to end the call as there is not a quorum. And city business is, is talking about reports or whatnot, people giving their reports of what they're doing on their own that has not been discussed with the Board, that's city's business. So that's, that's just my statement.
Alderman Reed, may I respond?
If you can respond by email, we want to proceed with the voting of the resolution. Is there any other, further discussion from all the people? Is there any other debate or discussion from all?
I got my hand.
Okay, is this, is this the third time for you? I just want to make sure.
Yep, this is the fourth.
Points of order, don't count.
Alderman Carroll.
I'd like to make a point about, you know, the comment that we don't want these city meetings going on for hours and hours. I don't want the city meeting going on for hours and hours and hours either, but if you take a look at what's going on in our city, we need to start addressing these kind of issues. And if it takes four and five hours to begin the process of addressing this stuff, putting processes in place, then that's what we need to be doing. You can't accomplish a lot in, 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 in an hour, and that's historically what's how these meetings have proceeded, that they've, they've gone on for an hour, hour and a half, and, and nothing's really ever done to be addressing what's going on in our community. We've got high crimes, we've got, we've got, we've got a high crime rate, we've got, you know, we don't have a lot of recreational opportunities, there's just a, a lot of things that are going on in our city that we need to make, take this time to, to be actually doing something to, to address these issues. I mean, I, I've never seen anybody put anything frivolous on the agenda. I don't think it's frivolous to put on the agenda that we need to be referring to the Parks and Recreation Board to partner with the University of Missouri to bring up an art program to the, to the community. So in, in conclusion, like I said, there's, there's so much going on in our community that it, it's gonna take hours upon hours during these meetings, and hopefully, once we get all of these processes in place and committees, et cetera, et cetera, then we, you know, can start having meetings that are an hour and a half, two hours. I mean, that's my, my goal as well, but until then, we need to start working and, and actually putting forth ideas and suggestions and, and passing ordinances to actually address what's going on in the city and quit ignoring it.
I would like permission to remove myself as chair to engage in a debate and comment. It doesn't require a vote, correct? All right. I want to make the point to say that I have served. All right. I want to make the point to say that I have served in this role. I'm sorry.
Who is chairing the meeting at this point?
Do I have to acknowledge the person who's who is chairing while I serve in that capacity?
If you're gonna.
I'm just I'm just engaging in debate. Go ahead, Alderman Carol.
If if you're gonna engage in debates, then you need to step down as chair and then somebody needs to.
Okay, Alderman Carol, could you proceed as chair while I engage?
I've already participated in the debate.
Okay, that's okay. I don't think Alderman Alderman Christian has not engaged in debate. Alderman Christian, will you please serve as chair while I engage in debate?
For the moment, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. I just wanted to make the point to say, and I want to acknowledge our senator that's on the call. I'm I'm glad she's here. I did try to reach out to her to share concerns about the city. I've been on the board now. This is going on my third year. So I've had the opportunity to serve under two mayors. And at the beginning of our, the process of our mayor becoming mayor. I've reached out to several mayors that have close relationships to ask them to support the mayor in the process of transition. The former mayor informed me that he told him to stay out of his business. Therefore, no transition took place between our old mayor and our new mayor. So from the time that he served in the capacity, there has been numerous activity that has taken place that's in violation of ordinances and a mismanagement of the city business. We have actually extended beyond grace for things to have happened over a course of a year and we're just now addressing it. As legislators, we can appear to the community as being negligent if we do not engage in some type of intervention to address the concerns. If you note, not a single Alderman in objection of the resolution spoke in favor of the mayor and said that he did not do any of those items that were being mentioned as concerns. Because that's not something that can be said. Because there has been concerns. As Alderman, we are legislators. We are not a part of the executive branch to engage in assisting the mayor in running the city. We have had Alderman that are eligible for censuring for that particular reason that we have not proceeded with that as well. But there has been communication where Alderman have pleaded and and commissioned to the mayor that you are our mayor. We need you to communicate with us and engage effectively and we still have not received a single email since he's been elected since last April. We all have received communication to attend this meeting. He did not indicate in the email with the resolutions attached, with the agenda attached, that he would not be in attendance. We were not told until this meeting that he and all the women in town would not be in attendance. So when individuals ask where is the mayor, he is not in attendance. And when he's not in attendance, I sit in as the chair. And there was a choice that was not provided to us in advance. So given all the multiple things that have happened, we charged the mayor $2,000 as a result of him using the utilities of the city when the carnival took place. When it when he when he's hired individuals erroneously. We it has caused us to be in litigation as a result of some of those actions. We are currently in a situation where he has hired an individual running for his son's seat into a a position that was not vacant that we had to go in closed session to address and that person is still employed against our decision in closed session. Those are things that are violation that any event that we choose to ignore. And we ever make the paper as has happened in the past with school boards and other entities. We will be considered negligent to not address these things in the most effective way in the most appropriate way, given how long this has happened. So for an entire year. We have not had a single email from the mayor. And we've only had a few communication that was indirect. Recently, I sent communication indicating, mayor, if you don't want to respond, please have a response via the clerk. Still no communication. The the chief said last week on the call, we have now lost credit with our vendors. That's mismanagement. If we've lost credit with our vendors, that's mismanagement. If we have three people with COVID where the worker had to get on a call and expressed that they manager have COVID, they have no direction, they didn't have PPE, they was refused PPE. And the area is not clean. And the mayor has allowed for that representative he hired in the vacant seat that was erroneously to serve as the person who also cleans. We have a problem. So as a citizen, if the mayor, when we request to put something on the agenda that that is this important. And he refuses to put on when it may be three days, a week in advance. That is because there is an attempt to not allow transparency to the community around issues that are serious enough and egregious enough that we will be in court and our reputations will be ruined for not doing our job as legislators to take care of the day to day operations of this city. We have allowed all the persons to bring resources into the community for COVID and during the pandemic. Whereby we, as all the people, had voted for an emergency to take place and and he served as emergency manager. But because no resources have come into the community, we have allowed all the people to bring those resources to to the community who have been in return abused that authority by serving it for multiple purposes not a board approved. So these issues we have to address. This is a part of taking care of business. It's very uncomfortable. It required prayer and meditation for myself. But it's serious enough that I wanted to try to get other people involved. I didn't get a chance to talk to the senator. But either way, we have to do something at this point. It's unfortunate how it had to happen that it was not allowed to be on the agenda properly for tomorrow. It had to be emergency. Because if we continue to push it off, we will never be addressed. And the citizen won't know what's going on for there to be transition transparency and they be able to intervene as appropriate in the future. So we have to start now in order to get that done. At this time, I would ask to return to the seat as chair.
All the woman Avon Elliott, I'd like to recognize all the women, West, and then relinquish my seat as chair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. I am going to respond to a few of the comments that we should be helping the mayor. That there attempts to unseat him, et cetera. The resolution is not attempting to unseat him, but to help him. And if people would look at that in a positive manner and stop going away having conferences with citizens, which is where a lot of this stuff is coming from. Maybe we would be able to accomplish some things. I personally had a talk with mayor on more than one occasion trying to help him. But he's resistant and I don't know if it's because I'm a female or what the problem is. I just know he's resistant. And as far as the citizens being on for four or five hours, they always have the right to leave the meeting like they did when we were meeting in person. They would get up and they would leave. So that option is still there. And I believe, oh, the other thing I want to address is my agenda items. I very seldom ask for agenda items to be put on the agenda. And mine were put on or submitted to Fran four days prior to the regular board meeting. And that's all I have to say for right now.
Alderman Christian, if you could just go ahead and remain as the chair, that would be appreciated because there's others, city business that I would like to engage in debate and make motions for. Is that okay?
I I can do that, yes.
Okay.
I see no other hands up or anything. We're going to continue on with the vote of the question then.
Can we get a roll call vote?
Yes, roll call vote, please.
Okay. This is all the woman West. May I have the motion repeated, please?
Did it? Was it written down? Let me see here.
It's in the chat.
So so was this on the resolution to censure? Thank you. I'm good.
Alderman Carol is at the one I moved that the board adopt Resolution 2020-05, that one?
Yes.
You see it, West, or you still need me to read it?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
Chair, then ask for a point of clarification since it's not in the chat. Who seconded this? I know it was seconded, but so we have it again.
Carol made the motion and West seconded.
Okay, I'm good. You may proceed.
You want me to call the roll now, Christian?
Yes, please.
Okay, all the all the women of Avon Elliott?
Yes.
All the women, Dales? Alderman Christian?
Yes.
Alderman Thomas?
No.
Alderman Carol?
Yes.
All the women read?
You're muted, Teresa.
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. All the women, West?
Yes.
Okay, all yes, Christian, and one no and one no answer. So one, two, three, four, five yes. One no and one no answer and one absent. Christian.
Okay, thank you. The motion to adopt Resolution 2020-05, Resolution of the City of Balfour neighbors, Missouri, censoring Mayor Tommy Pearson Senior, has passed. We will move on to the next part of the agenda, Section B. And that is, I get it. I'm sorry. My screen went blank on me. City Attorney Services and Contract. Does anyone have anything on that?
Have my hand raised. Are you able to see the hands?
That's.
Click on participants and then check.
No, I can't. I'm doing I'm doing this on phone. That's why I asked earlier that I would not be able to do this.
Um, Fran, from here on, can you assist him with recognizing the hands just because of that that deficiency?
Sure. Avon Elliott, hands raised.
Okay.
All the women, Avon Elliott, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you so much. As we talked about before, all these conversations are very serious and as an emergency, we have to take care of business. So when it comes to the Attorney Services, and I'm glad that she's here because she can provide any statement as a result of the things that I bring up as a concern that has been duly noted from other individuals as a concern. So I will read my statement based on that.
Proceed.
Okay, just one minute. I want to make sure I'm reading the correct things. Okay, so I wanted to go forth and make the statement that on February the sixth, we actually hired the attorney. And at the time that we hired the attorney. I made the motion to abstain. So during that point. During that point, I chose to obtain for voting as the board never approved the termination of the previous attorney. They failed to properly post the position and did not conduct an interview for public inspection. Board members, including myself, were concerned about a conflict of interest given her campaign contribution to the mayor for the mayor's race last year totaling $800. The assumption of some of the members were that she would not be able to provide proper guidance to the board when guidance would be needed in conflict with ordinances and process violations of the mayor. And unfortunately, this has proven to be true. She has violated her moral and ethical obligation to represent our city, void of biases, and give proper advice to the entire board. There are multiple incidents where misguided were provided prior to and during board meetings with little to no self directing or self correction, I'm sorry, to demonstrate the error in advice. As a result, resort of poor guidance sunshine laws have been violated via email and during public meetings such as the one held last Thursday that continued continued without a quorum. Attorney White Coleman never advised the mayor and the other persons to end the meeting as business was being conducted, which was a sunshine violation. She also supported the mayor position to not allow members to make a motion to the to add the agenda when just cause is determined, when just cause is determined by the board of Alderman and not the mayor. And members had provided agenda items more than 25 hours in advance. Additionally, as the mayor insulted the board of members, board board members by calling them the gang of five and suggesting that members were trying to cause a mutiny. She did not advise the mayor that his comments were a form of defamation of character and has legal ramifications. In the best interest of the city and in the effort to conduct the city business with proper guidance. I am in support of a recommendation of the board to provide a notice of termination and follow proper legal processes for hiring a city attorney. So at this time, I would like to make a motion that I would like to make a motion that we provide a notice of termination effective tomorrow with 60 days granted, which will be October the 12th. Let me provide the proper motion. I'm sorry. I have items that keep popping up on my screen. Okay, I motion to provide the attorney a notice of termination effective August the 13th, 2020, with services ending 60 days from this date, which is Monday, October the 12th, 2020, per ordinance number 2563 for failure to properly advise the city of Belle Fountain and its officials in legal matters. I will be putting that in the agenda in the chat for a second. Yes, there's, oh, Christian, Alderman Christian.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He, I think he's frozen. He has to proceed with asking for a second.
Is there, I'm trying to, is there a second on that motion?
All the woman, Dale's hand is up. In this order, Dale's, Thomas and Wes.
I'm asking if there's a second on the motion so that we can continue to go to debate. If there's no second on the motion.
All the woman read.
All the woman read, seconded the motion. We will go on to the question right now for debate. Alderman Dale's, all the women Dale's, get her hand up first.
Thank you. I object to this motion or this termination of the current city attorney. It is the only, the only person that can do that is the mayor. She was appointed. You know, it it it's just discrimination and it's really sad that African American women do this against another African American woman. We had so many issues with the previous attorney. None of this was part of. This is discrimination. It's not fair. I object to it all. This is an illegal meeting. And, you know, we're we're just letting fight it out in court. So the citizens will know that those on the board would like to do things that's going to take away the tax dollars for the things for them. Because it, you know, as far as it goes, because this is not right. It is not right. And I object to it all.
Thank you, all the women. Next person with her hand up, Alderman Thomas.
Yes, it's Alderman Thomas, third ward. This
This, uh, this meeting is illegal, the only person that can fire or ask for the resignation of, or let go our attorney is the mayor. And you, we continue to go through this meeting and we are creating such a force that is going to cost us, if we think we lost money in the pandemic, we're going to lose more money doing this. And for those that have sat and thought about this and dealt with this, your day will come, and it's in the courtroom. That's all I have to say at this time.
Thank you, Alderman Thomas, uh, Aldo woman West has their hand up next. Aldo woman West?
I think she's.
Are you there, Aldo woman West?
I think she's. The next hand up is, uh, Aldo woman Avon Elliott.
We will go to Aldo woman Avon Elliott for her second statement.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, for my second and last statement for the debate, the two Aldermen that have spoken prior to me shows and indicate the concern around legislation. We have ordinances that indicate that as a board, for all of the positions that exist in this city, that the board had, can make a motion to remove those individuals. So we have to do a better job edging, educating ourselves as legislators, which has been a problem that has aided in the concerns that we mentioned in the resolution. All the people are not doing their due diligence to read the ordinances and understand them, and then from that understanding, properly monitor the implementation of those ordinances by making sure that the mayor and, and their peers are properly implementing ordinances to avoid violations. So each time there is a debate, there's never any statements being made that suggest that any of the concerns brought up or issue is only a debate that the meeting is being held, which shows the public that the concerns that are being brought forth are legitimate concerns. That concludes my debate. Thank you, Chair.
Oh, uh, Attorney White Coleman, do you have your hand up?
Uh, yes, I, I would like to address the allegations that have been made against me if I would be permitted to do that. Um, first, um, I am not sure where this eight hundred dollar contribution came from, um. I don't know if this is a reference to contributions made over a period of time or what. Uh, but without more information, I am not certain exactly what is being referenced here because I know I have not made, uh, an eight hundred dollar contribution to the mayor or anyone else at one time. Um, secondly, with respect to the issue concerning a quorum, um, while you certainly cannot conduct any business without a quorum, uh, there are limited procedural matters and actions that can be handled without a quorum. Uh, if my memory is correct, I do specifically recall saying, since we don't have a quorum, we can't conduct any business. Uh, and this was during the time I was reporting. Um, the other thing is, um, with respect to the issue about, uh, the mayor not allowing a motion and my statement, I distinctly recall stating that the mayor's concern was that no notice was given of these matters, and therefore, the citizens didn't have noticed that these things would be on the agenda as required by the sunshine law. That was my position. The statement regarding the mayor referencing a gang of five, uh, whether or not that's defamatory or not, I believe is a, a question for a jury. He could have just been referencing the fact that there were five who tend to vote together. Uh, is that defamation? I don't think you're in a position to say that. Um, failure to properly advise the city on certain matters, I have always in my over thirty-some-odd years practicing, given the best legal advice I could give. Whether you want to take it is a different question, but I've certainly given it. And it's not been based on politics or anything else. It's based upon my understanding of the law and application of the law to the facts. And Aldo woman Reed, with respect to the statement you made, I do recall when I first started attending the strategic planning meetings, I did not understand the purpose. And I asked about that. Once I was advised that no business was conducted, I don't recall bringing that question up again. Now, if the city clerk has minutes, we can look back at that and see, but that is my recollection. Now, as to removal, state law, Section seventy-nine point two four zero specifically provides, the mayor may, with the consent of a majority of all of the members elected to the Board of Alderman, remove from office any appointed officer of the city at will, and such a pointed officer may so be removed by a two-thirds vote of all of the members elected to the Board of Alderman, independently of the mayor's approval or recommendation. Um, it is not my understanding that the mayor is making this recommendation, and this is what state law requires. I know of no requirement to advertise a position for a city attorney, it is an appointed position in your ordinance is so state. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
I'm going to reserve that time right now at the moment, move on to the other Alderman, get their second turn in. And I, I thank you for your comment, and I'm going to move on to Aldo woman Dale, who's next in line for her second turn.
Thank you, um. I think the ordinance states, I can't pull it up here, the majority would be of six of us to remove the attorney. However, we're still in a, a legal meeting, so I guess this really doesn't matter, but I do want to object to anything as far as removing the attorney. Um, I think she has done a very good job. And when she does advise, especially regarding to the soil lateral, the bond issue, and other things, it was overlooked. And certain individuals say things about the ordinances, but they don't follow. Um, on social media, personnel issues, but they don't follow. If we need to sit down, all of us, and really come to some agreements and try to work this out, so we won't have our city in the newspaper because of illegal meetings, um, ethics violations. Um, i- i- it's just, it's just unfair, um. I will say that sometimes we do want answers. And sometimes we don't get them. I do not think that this is the way to get them. I think everyone needs time to learn their job, learn their procedures, uh, learn what the procedures are. It took me almost four years to learn. I think it takes everybody one turn to learn what they need to know about serving the citizens of Bell Fountain neighbors. There have been many things that have been said to our citizens and done by other individuals, nothing has been brought against them. And it's unfair that we've taken the steps that we, well, it's unfair that the steps have been taken to have this meeting, which is illegal, and I, i- if somebody can tell me one more time, one more time, what was the the just cause for this meeting, this emergency meeting? That it couldn't, we couldn't sit in a room and talk about this? Can somebody answer that? One of the people that signed the petition, one of the other people, what's the emergency about this particular meeting that we need to have today, and then have another meeting tomorrow without, we have a, a emergency meeting without giving twenty-four hour notice?
This is Aldo woman West, I think it's been stated several times.
Thank you, uh, you asked for a response.
We're going to do this in order, we're going to do this in order of the hands raised, I will get to you, Elise, I'm sorry, Aldo woman Dale's. Then, question, finish your statement.
Thank you, I, I, I appreciate that, I thought I was, I thought I was being interrupted and I just, you know.
I, I'm still. You paused for an answer.
I.
Thank you very much, Alderman Christian.
I'm going to move to Alderman Thomas then, who has his second turn up. He was next.
Thank you, it's Alderman Thomas, third ward. It was stated that, uh, I had nothing to say good that the mayor had di- had done since his term. Well, this illegal meeting has not given the mayor the opportunity to come and speak for himself on what he has done, to answer to the allegations which were put forth. Um, that our attorney had not protected us, has not represented us, again, is a farce. It's a farce, and I'm going to use this word, we need a kumbaya moment. We need a good trouble moment. We need to come together for the citizens, for the people of this community versus to tear it down and cause it not to possibly exist, which could very well happen. Thank you, that's all I have to say for now.
Thank you, Alderman, Aldo woman West's hand was up next.
Okay, I will try to be b- brief. First, I want to say when and all the person leaves the room to confer with the citizen, they need to both be muted so the conversation is not overheard, that's number one. Um, and I also want to say that, uh, going back to the attorney, when the mayor made the statement, a gang of five, that's a statement and a term that he received from the same citizen who, from the very beginning, started using the term legal, illegal meeting. So, you know, he's listening more to the citizen than he is to his board. Now, that citizen made that comment on Facebook, calling us the gang of five and calling us out by name. However, you can look at it and turn it around. You have the attorney, the mayor, and three other other people who tend to vote together as well. Do we want to refer to them as the gang of five? It was my suggestion that we get together and have a meeting, just the board of all of the people. Um, so that we could hash things out, and I think we really have tried to, uh, hash things out with the mayor. Um, I've known of many people who have spoken to him, but he will not listen. And so what do you do with people who won't take advice, or who feel like they know everything, who won't attend training to try to make himself better? And that's what we're trying to do, attend these trainings so that you will have the same understanding as those people who did attend, so that we can move forward and have a better meeting. And I'm so tired of hearing for our citizens, we all work for our citizens. I know I want to do what's best, and I put my own money up front in one instance to try to do that. And so, um, you know, we're going to have people who, uh, are followers because people have a gift of gab, instead of using their own mind and critically thinking about what's taking place. And so, you know, that's basically all I have to say, because I'm really tired of all this mess, but thank you.
Thank you. I see no other hands, I'm going to go to the, uh, question, reread the motion and ask for the city clerk to do a roll call.
You, you guys said a roll call now, or click?
I'm going to reread the motion that was properly seconded already, it was a motion to provide the attorney a notice of termination effective August thirteenth, twenty twenty, with services ending sixty days from this date, which is Monday, October twelfth, twenty twenty, per ordinance number twenty-five sixty-three for failure to properly advise the city of Bell Fountain and its officials in legal matters. City clerk, could you please do a roll call vote?
Yes. Alderman Christian.
Yes.
Aldo woman Avon Elliott?
Yes.
Aldo woman Dale? Alderman Thomas?
No.
Aldo woman West?
Yes.
Aldo woman Reed?
Yes.
Alderman Carol? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Five yes, one no, one absent, and one no answer.
Motion passes? And I'm going to, I need to relinquish my title as chair now and take, get it back to the regular chair, please.
Okay, um, because I have a second motion, and I would like to ask, um, James Carroll to step in as chair.
Sorry, I'm sorry, can you repeat that again, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm requesting that you sit in as chair, I have another motion, okay. Um, Chair, um, I would like to make a motion for Attorney, um, Susan McFarland from the White Coleman and Associates LLC to serve as the substitute attorney for Dorothy White Coleman by attending all regular and special board meetings, serving as the direct contact for the Board of Alderman for communication and providing assistance to the Board of Alderman on drafting legal opinions, ordinances, and resolutions and other items requested by the majority of the board. Um, um, I want to add to that, um, until, um, termination of the contract.
Okay. Is there a second?
Aldo woman West second.
Okay, it's been, uh, moved and properly seconded that, um, Attorney Susan McFarland from the White Coleman and Associates LLC to serve as the substitute attorney for Dorothy White Coleman by attending all regular and special board meetings, serving as the direct contact for the Board of Alderman for communication and providing assistance to the Board of Alderman on drafting legal opinions, ordinances, and resolutions and other items requested by the majority of the Board of Alderman until termination of the contract. until termination of the contract. Are there any questions or debate?
Uh, this is Dorothy White Coleman. May I have something to say about that?
Yes, proceed.
Um, first and foremost, um, Ms. McFarland is an associate with my law firm. Uh, I am the partner here and I supervise her in everything she does. Um, if you require her to attend, it really requires my involvement also, as I supervise her. Additionally, can you tell me what is supposed to occur if she is not able to attend? I have other legal associates here, uh, but not lawyers. I, I find it really difficult to believe that, um, you're trying to tell me how to run my office. And in addition, state law requires a two-thirds vote Yep. to terminate my services under state law, since there's nothing in your code. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm finished.
Okay. Uh, Alderman Thomas?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And I was just gonna reiterate, I mean, we know that it takes a two-thirds vote in order to terminate the attorney. If you read the statute, if you look. So, again, this is an illegal meeting. So, everything that is being done tonight will just go away and we'll meet for our kumbaya moment. And I pray, I do pray, that we can all come together and do this the right way. Right now, that's all I have to say.
Um, could you lower your hand too, please? Um.
Yeah, I'm, I'm working on it now.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Um, Alderwoman Avon Elliott?
Okay, um, the current contract, um, does allow for an state substitute. Um, since last year, we've had a sus-, we had a substitute from our previous firm that served in the capacity of supporting the, this, the, uh, Board of Aldermen in the city. So, the guidance and who is the owner has nothing to do with who we can mandate to provide services from because our, the contract does allow for a substitute. Um, in addition to that, to bring up the point that two-thirds vote is required to terminate, we did not, you can check every minute that exists. We did not terminate our previous contract. So, that was already done illegally. And we do have the right, as alderpeople, to correct our errors and follow procedure the correct way. Prior to any motion that took place, we had motions for Attorney Gray to us on the call today. We had motions for other attorneys that because the time that, that those concerns was being brought forth, no board member had expressed any interest in transferring attorneys. We received an email from the O.K. firm that said, per the mayor, that they were resigning, per the mayor. The mayor had no authority to initiate a request of resignation without board approval. Nor did he, by any minute that exists, ever make a motion asking the board to terminate the con-, the contract of the previous firm. If the previous firm so chose to, they could have indicated a discrimination act because we were indeed replacing a non-African-American firm with an African-American firm. So, and we did not do a RFP process, we did no interviews. Um, we did none of those things. So, we didn't have an opportunity, when we decided, when the majority of the board decided they wanted an attorney, we did not afford the opportunity for Attorney Gray or some other people that was referred to have the opportunity to go through a RFP process or an interview or for application to be completed. So, we have already caused a potential legal action. So, if our actions tonight require some type of legal actions, I'm sure that the other legal actions that are taking place with a person taking a seat that was not voted for the other contract to be terminated will come up as an issue. But because we have unfairly placed our attorney in a situation based on relationship where she has to choose between properly guiding the board and her guidance to the mayor based on relationship. I knew that that would be an uncomfortable situation from the beginning. That's why I was not in favor of it. Also because we were getting efficient services from our substitute attorney. I agree with the citizens that we were not getting everything that we needed as far as effective communication from the previous attorney. But when we got our substitute, now one board member made a complaint about the services being provided. And so, since we have now a attorney that Susan McFarland indicated to me, we will work to gain your trust. From that time, I have shared ordinances and made a point of sunshine violations. And when I made that point of an email where our city clerk said that there was four yays and four nays and the mayor broke the tie, our attorney said, "That was not a sunshine violation." And I said, "I'll contact the Attorney General Office." Once I contacted the Attorney General Office, I came back. And when a polling was trying to take place again, I said, "According to the Attorney General Office, as I previously stated, polling is a violation." Our attorney said it was ministerial and therefore not a violation. But when I indicated the Attorney General's statement, she confirmed. I concur with Alderwoman Avon Elliott that I also contacted Attorney General Office and that is indeed a cor-, incorrect process. So, why would we continue to have someone to misguided, did not come back and correct? That is a problem. We were also told during the pandemic that we had given the mayor, through a vote of emergency resolution, authority to council board meetings. And I consistently asked, "Where is the language that suggests that we had done that?" So, I sent that document over to the Attorney General, I mean, over to the municipal league, and they saw no evidence of us giving that authority. Our attorney, once again, indicated that we had given applied authority to the mayor to cancel the legislative branch board meetings. And if we did not proceed forward, as we did in consideration of the city and city business, we would not have met at all during the pandemic because the me-, the mayor had canceled meetings back to back. The first meeting, we did a polling. Later found out that that was incorrect. The second meeting, the attorney assisted the mayor in drafting an executive order that said that he can cancel meetings. And we proceeded as well in order to take care of business. There were bills that he was going to go forth and approve that were duplicate checks on that bill that if we had not called for a meeting and properly approved those over 500s, there would have been checks going out that was going to the vendor twice because it was an oversight. We cannot take the risk of discontinued misguidance and, and, and run the jeopardy of being in court because of being told things that is not true. It is unfortunate that we do have a situation where it's our first African-American female attorney, but that cannot be the forefront of our reason for maintaining services. We have to maintain services on the basis of what the city needs and the guidance that the board needs that's unbiased and truthful in order to get business done. That concludes my, my statement, um, during debate.
Thank you. Can you put your hand down, please?
Oh, y- yes. May I address that, please?
Um, I, I'm gonna get to you after Alderwoman Dales.
Thank you.
Okay, Alderwoman Dales?
I apologize, I didn't mean to have my hand up, sorry.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, attorney. Uh, can you put it down then, please?
I, I, I will as soon as I get some role on my computer.
Figure it out, okay. Okay, so, um, go ahead, uh, Attorney, uh, White Coleman.
Um, thank you, Alderman Carroll. First and foremost, let me say, I am indeed an African-American female. However, I have not made my reputation on being an African-American female. My reputation is based upon the work I have done for over thirty-some-odd years. And I'll put that up against any attorney you bring forward. Secondly, with respect to the issue involving the sunshine law, what I find so ironic is that that entire thing came up because Alderwoman Avon Elliott raised issues regarding the agenda.
Excuse me, keep, keep your comment, don't, please don't, uh, uh, refer to, um, use the name of alderpeople.
I, I will do that, thank you.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh, comments were made about matters that were wanted to be placed on the agenda. The mayor, although he could have said, certainly since he sets the agenda, he could have said, "I am not going to put these items on the agenda." He didn't say that. Instead, he asked the clerk to poll the members to see if they wanted these items on the agenda. I find it so ironic that this all came about because of one alderperson. And now, the scream is being made that it was a sunshine violation. My position then was, and still is, that the matters about which the clerk inquired of other Board of Alderpersons were ministerial matters. They did not have to do with city business, but were ministerial in nature. Because of all of the discussion generated by that, I too did contact the Attorney General and I ran the issue by them. There was an agreement that these were ministerial matters. But when the clerk recorded a vote, when she said, "These people want to do this," that was where the problem occurred. And I did indeed report back and say, "This is what the Attorney General stated. These were ministerial matters, but the clerk should stay away from reporting votes." That was what I stated. With respect to what occurred during the pandemic, again, my legal advice is based upon the law and interpretation of authorities that discuss the law and application of those to the facts. I did indeed state that the mayor had certain emergency powers. And I specifically said that those powers came from the fact that the board had passed a resolution and had made the mayor, and in addition to him serving as mayor.
Excuse me.
He was managing the emergency management director.
Excuse me, attorney?
Yes.
Can I pause? I, I need the alderpeople to come back and, and listen to what's going on. I don't see how you can make a decision and not hear what everybody's got to say. So, I, I just want to pause this until we get all the alderpeople back in to hear what you've got to say.
Um, I, I can wrap this up, Alderman Carroll. Thank you for that. Essentially, what we have here are those people who are opposed to the mayor. And it doesn't matter what I say or do. If I don't say what they want me to say or make a ruling in their favor, then they're gonna have a problem with that. That's all it is. My legal advice is my legal advice and it's based upon the law and extrapolation from the law and applying that law to the facts. It's not based upon anything else. And if you don't agree with me, you don't agree with me. But I can certainly find others who will. And I believe it was stated during our seminar we had on the sunshine law. Casey Lars made it very clear that not all lawyers agree. One lawyer can look at a set of facts and look at the law as applied to those facts and come up with one conclusion. And another will look at the same facts and apply the same law and come up with a different conclusion. We don't all agree. However, when I put a legal opinion out there, I can support it. And that's all I need to say at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else want to comment? Okay, um, it's been, um, moved and properly seconded for Attorney Susan McFarland from White Coleman and Associates to serve as the substitute attorney for Dorothy White Coleman by attending all regular and special board meetings, serving as the direct contact for Board of Aldermen communication and providing assistance to the Board of Aldermen on drafting legal opinions, ordinances, and resolutions and other items requested by the majority of the Board of Aldermen until termination of contract. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay. Alderwoman Avon Elliott?
Yes.
Alderwoman West?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Alderwoman Reed?
Yes, did you hear me, Fran?
I do, I did now, thank you. Uh, Alderwoman Dales? Um, Alderman Carroll?
Yes.
Alderman Christian?
Yes.
Alderman Thomas?
No.
Okay, five yes, one no, one no answer, and one absent. Carol?
Okay, thank you. Um, do, do you want to go on?
Just a, just a point of order, can you state the, um?
I'm sorry. Can you tell me how many voted yes and, and no again, Fran, please?
Okay, five yes, one no, one no answer, and one absent.
Okay, um, the Board of Aldermen has, um, voted with five yes, one no, and one abstaining. So, the, uh, motion passes. Do you, are you gonna talk about the update on personnel vacancies? Or do you want to take over the chair? Okay, um, next item up on the agenda is update on personnel vacancies.
Um, let me raise my hand. Can I proceed?
Uh, Alderwoman Dales has her hand up for, first.
Okay.
And if this illegal meeting, two-thirds is six. Duly noted for the record.
Alderwoman Avon Elliott?
Um, yes, um.
Hand down, please, I'm sorry. Alderwoman Dales, can you put your hand down, please? Thank you. Alderwoman Avon Elliott?
Okay, so, um, just as what was stated in the resolution, um, there are several positions that continue to go, um, unsealed that are essential to the city. And, um, I did want to, um, Chair, ask, um, you um, to inquire of the city clerk the status of the city administrative position being posted, um, along with, um, the status of the rec. center director position being posted. along with the position that we motioned for the candidate to resign from and reapply so that we can, so we could, you know, the person that needed to resign and apply for a vacant position per our motion in closed session. I need, I want to know what the updates on the position being posted and the status of the direction.
The position being posted?
City manager administrator position being posted. Because that was motioned to be posted in July, we did have a delay. And then the position that we had requested for the person to resign. And I also wanted to inquire about specifically the person who, and I believe because it's a contractor, we can say by name, the person who is hired to do the cleaning for the city. And what was the last one? And, and then I wanted to.
So what do you want to know about cleaning for the city, what specific?
The contractor's name and what their schedule is.
No.
And, well, was my last inquiry, so I wanted to make the point of saying that.
This is a point of order, this is Alderwoman West. Before you say anybody's name, I don't think you should, this is not closed session.
Well, this, well, if you make, if you make, if you mention the person name that has the contract, that is not a requirement for a closed session. So I'm only referencing a person who may have a contract for cleaning. And that would be contracted services, yes ma'am.
Okay, so I rule, I rule, I, with Alderwoman Avon Elliott.
Okay, the other thing is, we do have one of the rec center persons, they may have some knowledge. Could you ask them to speak to their knowledge of the insurance and the understanding that we, they, their insurance may go up because of these vacancies that are not filled? Because I do not have additional information about that and maybe they can speak to their, their experience as a staff members around the increase in insurance that will happen because of the employment numbers that are not filled. That concludes my request Chair.
Thank you. City Clerk, could you provide us an update regarding the city administrator position?
Chair, I have my hand up.
We're gonna go through first and then we'll go through questions.
Okay, the positions are not posted, the mayor told me not to.
For the city administrator, that's not posted?
No.
Okay, what about the rec center director, is that posted?
Now that was posted at one point, so I'll have to look at the website to see if it's there. But I know it had been posted at one point.
Okay, and then about the individual that we discussed in closed session, was that what the board's decision was, was that followed up upon where he resigned and reapplied?
No, he did not resign and reapply.
Okay, and then regarding, can you provide the name of the contractor who does the cleaning and his or her schedule?
Okay, it's, it's the same person, so I don't know if I'm supposed to call that name because it's not a.
Troy Jefferson?
Right, that's who's doing it.
Troy Jefferson's the contractor and do you have his schedule?
No, I don't have his schedule.
Okay.
He cleans after we're closed, he either come in the morning or do it in the evening.
Okay, thank you. And then is there anybody from the rec center? Is there anybody from the rec center that can speak about the insurance? Okay, so then, moving along, Alderwoman Dales?
Alderman Carroll, can you acknowledge that two thirds is a six votes, six votes, yes or no?
That's not a question, we're not, we're going on, are you, you have a comment Alderwoman Avon Elliott's?
You can't answer the question?
That's not, we're past that, we're on Avon Elliott's.
We're not passing if you didn't answer it.
Okay, I'm moving on, Alderman Thomas, do you have anything to say?
Yes, I have my hand up.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, concerned, you were asking about the update on personnel vacancies. And in this resolution that you all illegally passed concerning section two, part B, line E, you're directing the mayor to fulfill board requests concerning personnel decisions made in closed sessions in a timely manner. So are you trying to straighten this out now and then it'll be done for him? Or are you still expecting him to do this if you take care of it tonight? In this illegal meeting? That's all I have to say tonight, right now.
Thank you, can you put your hand up please?
Now, take my hand down, yeah, I will, you gotta give me a minute now.
Okay, thank you. Alderwoman Avon Elliott? You're on mute.
Okay, so I understand that the resolution should dictate some of the things that we have made motions and the majority of individuals have passed. We made a motion for the position of the city administrator to be posted on July the first. So we've already indicated that concern. We did not know until tonight that the city clerk was directed to not put it on there. So once again, that is a concern that puts our city clerk in the middle of following board approved items and ordinances along with the direction that she may get in from the mayor in violation of our request. So I think that we need to have serious consideration around the roles and responsibility of the city clerk in relation to board directive so that there is no confusion when on the legislative side she's expected to do something that the mayor may direct her opposite of to do. But I would like for a follow-up maybe on tomorrow. I'm not sure, I think, I think under, I don't know if under budget or maybe a future meeting that we can have more information about the impact of insurance with the vacancies that currently exist. So that concludes my, my request around personnel, if there's no further discussion.
Anybody else have anything?
I have, I did, I'm sorry, I have one more thought that we need to bring up in preparation for tomorrow's meeting around personnel. It's my understanding that the board had voted for Chief to not feel a vacancy that he indicated he was, was not informed of that he should not have filled. So once again, that was a communication problem from the executive. So we now have a vacancy with the officer who chose to resign. We would need to have special consideration around what we do with that position, whether we're gonna allow him to refill or if we can refer those salaries to other line items. So I just wanted to bring that up for the board's consideration for tomorrow's meeting on how to address that position vacancy. And I understand Chair, if you can give clarification because once again, we were not communicated this, that the court lost their part-time court clerk and we had not received communication of that, could you confirm that with Fran?
City Clerk, is that, is the part-time court clerk vacant?
Part-time court clerk, yes, she, she's not there anymore. But the judge did bring, she hired another person, so.
For that part-time vacancy?
Yes, for the court clerk. So we weren't, we were only vacant for, ooh, not long at all, maybe a day or two. Because the judge brought the other person in and I may not be correct on a day or two, but I know under a week.
Okay, thank you.
There was another, well, that's it.
Yeah. Anybody have anything else regarding this topic?
This is Amy Maholland with the Recreation Department.
Yes. Yes, there was a question regarding, do you have any knowledge about your health insurance going up? Because there's less than fifty city employees resulting in a twenty percent increase in your, your health insurance premiums?
I do not know how many employees there are in the city. I do know that we have lost four full-time employees in the last year.
I can answer that question that you posed just now.
Yes, could you go ahead?
Yes, I didn't know that's what Alderwoman Avon Elliott was referring to. But the twenty percent increase resulted because of the claims that had been turned in, not because of the amount of our personnel. But yes, we are under fifty, we're right at forty-nine. So, now, again, the insurance lady told us because of the claims, our insurance went up twenty percent. We could have gotten a better deal had we been at fifty or above. But the twenty percent is because of the claims.
Does that answer your question, Alderwoman Avon Elliott?
Yes, okay, so Chair, just for one last clarification, what are the typical claims that have resulted in that if she has any knowledge without mentioning anyone's name?
City Clerk, can you answer that?
Right, I do not have the specifics. All I know is the lady said because of the claims.
Oh, right. Anybody else have anything regarding this topic?
I do. I'd like to ask you a question please, James Carroll and Dr. Miranda, where's the mayor?
Hold on, I don't see, where?
Who is that?
Yeah, who?
Mr. Williams, where's the mayor? Why he's not in this board meeting?
Mr. Williams?
Why is this, what's going on?
Mr. Williams, we're not on that, we're talking about.
I don't care what you want, I'm just talking about why you're not answering my question.
Okay, but we're not on that topic right now.
Let me see, can I get all y'all removed?
Okay.
Please mute.
Twenty, twenty.
Please mute you.
Going on, I'd like to relinquish my position as Chair and turn it back over to Alderwoman Avon Elliott.
Okay. All right, proceed, the next topics are approval of standing orders for agenda procedures, sergeant-at-arms assignment. And then we will follow, follow up with committees and appointments. Please mute all parties, Fran please.
I would like to move that the board adopted standing orders three point five and three point six regarding agenda procedures.
Can you please read them for the public?
Okay, sure. Section three point one, any alderperson can request an item subjects be added to the agenda of a regularly scheduled board of alderperson meeting. All requests shall be made by Monday at noon before the regularly scheduled board of alderperson meeting. These requests will be made to the city clerk. The city clerk will then create the proposed agenda within twenty-four hours Tuesday at noon. This proposed agenda will be forwarded to the president of the board who will ensure compliance with the sunshine law, chapter six ten of the Missouri revised statutes, standing orders and Roberts Rules of Order. The president of the board will contact appropriate alderperson for any necessary corrections or revisions to the agenda items subjects. Failure to provide the necessary corrections or revisions will result in the item subject being removed from the proposed agenda. The president of the board shall then forward any corrections or revisions to the city clerk within twenty-four hours Wednesday at noon. The city clerk will make the necessary revisions or corrections to the proposed agenda and post this proposed agenda twenty-four hours prior to the board of alderperson meeting. Three point six, the city clerk will be informed of item subjects of a proposed agenda of a special meeting of the board of alderperson by one of the four alderpersons requesting a special meeting. The city clerk shall forward a copy of this proposed agenda to the president of the board as soon as possible after receiving a request for special meeting of the board of alderpersons. The president of the board will ensure compliance with the sunshine law, chapter six ten of the Missouri revised statutes, standing orders and Roberts Rules of Order. The president of the board will contact the appropriate alderperson for any necessary corrections or revisions to agenda items subjects. Failure to provide the necessary corrections or revisions will result in the item subjects being removed from the proposed agenda and possible cancellation of the special meeting of the board of alderperson. The president of the board shall then forward any corrections or revisions to the city clerk. The city clerk will make the necessary revisions or corrections to the proposed agenda and post this proposed agenda twenty-four hours prior to the special meeting of the board of alderperson. That's it.
Is there a second to accept the, the motion for the board to adopt standing orders three point five and three point six regarding agenda procedures, there a second?
Alderwoman West second.
Okay, for the question and debate, Alderwoman, Alderwoman Dales? All right, Alderman Thomas, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, I want to continue to state that this is out of order and it's an illegal meeting. I have a question for the city clerk.
You have to direct the question to me and I can direct it to her.
Okay, would you direct the question to the city clerk for me? And I would like for her to tell me how many votes is two thirds and for it to pass?
Are you, are you answering to the debate around the standing orders that's currently on?
Yes, there's a vote being taken, I would like to know how many vote?
Well, the vote, we are discussing board adopted standing orders. Are you, are you directing, you, we are on debate, so you are talking through the reason that you're for or against those standing orders at this time?
I am always.
As a legislator, you have the responsibility to know what two thirds are. So you are directing the question that you already are aware of knowing after a second term.
Okay, do, please. The best way for me to say this is I have a question for the city clerk. I wanted for the record, since she is the record keeper, what is the two thirds vote? Is it five or is it six? There would be one or two, one answer. And that is directed to the city clerk who is the record keeper and this is during the discussion of.
But isn't, that is unrelated to the current item.
It's unrelated to you, however, that is my question.
Alderwoman West, I call for point of order. And point of order is the debate should be on the pending conversation.
But that is my question for the debate. How can you tell who votes not to pass? So are we being interrupted or are you talking to me?
Okay, do you have a comment in favor or against?
I do have a comment and I'm relating it to the city clerk. What is two thirds vote of this to be passed, is it five or is it six?
For the resolution?
Yeah.
It's a majority for the resolution?
Okay, so we're not taking a vote?
We are, we're on discussion and debate at this time. And it, once we conclude, it will be majority vote for it to pass, so Alderman Thomas.
Okay, okay, the question for the city clerk.
I can answer the question.
I'm sorry?
I can answer the question.
Thank you.
The two third vote is six votes for this board, for eighteen.
Thank you, that's all I wanted for the record, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Alderman Thomas?
Yes, is Alderman Thomas third one?
Again, we are, uh, in an illegal meeting, which the resolution that, that was passed earlier concerning the directive given to the mayor, asking him to, uh, participate in Roberts Rules of Order study and all of that, but it is my understanding that, uh, right now, the agenda is approved by the mayor, so basically, what you're saying is you want to take the mayor out of, uh, the agenda procedure process and put that burden on the President of the Board of Aldermen. Uh, that's my question and that's all I have to say right now. And anyone can answer that.
We're, we're in debate, so in dur- during debate, you're just indicating your, your pros and cons for the resolution or the motion that's being set forth.
O- okay, this'll be my second raise then, since I'm still open, then, uh,
No, you can, you can continue on.
My statement.
You can continue on.
No. No, I don't, I, I, I don't see, I, I really don't see a point in continuing on in an illegal meeting where you're trying to strip the power by using this from the mayor and put the burden back on to the, uh, the, uh, President of the Board of Aldermen.
Um, I, I did not create, I did not create the standing orders, but do you have as-
No, 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 you are, you, you are the President of the Board of Aldermen, so not even thinking-
But that, that is a general term for, that, that will be done for any person that is serving in that capacity, but is there a ordinance or, is there, excuse me, is there a ordinance that you are referencing concerning the agenda setting? Do you have an ordinance to reference concerning the agenda setting during your debate?
Uh, can I defer back to the attorney, because I don't have that right here in front of me?
No, that's, it's okay, um, Alderman Carroll is up next if you have con- con- concluded your debate statement. All right, Alderman Carroll.
Okay, um, last week, we, uh, some of the alderpersons attended, um, Sunshine Law Training, um, and, um, Missouri Municipal League Conference, um, and in, in that, um, that, uh, that course, that workshop, I, um, asked the presenter who, um, was responsible for the, um, development and determining what topics go on the agenda, and what I was informed was that that, um, is up to, it's more local, um, control who, who decides that. Um, additionally, last week, I reached out to Casey Lawrence, who is the Director of Sunshine Law Compliance and Records Management with the Missouri Attorney General's Office, um, regarding that same question, um, who determines who, um, can place items on the agenda and who controls the agenda, and she related that those questions must be addressed at the local level, and I'm going to email, um, uh, everyone on the Board and the, the city clerk, um, that email communication, and I'd like to have that placed in the, the record. Um, regarding city ordinances, there is nothing in the city ordinances which dictate, uh, who can place items on the agenda or who actually controls the agenda, and, um, from, um, my understanding, the, the city ord- ordinance, Chapter two, Article two, um, Section two dash fourteen, um, all meetings of the Board of Aldermen shall be conducted by Roberts Rules of Order, and, um, according to Roberts Rules of Order, um, in some organizations, a particular practice may sometimes come to be followed as a matter of established custom so that it is treated practically as if it were prescribed by rule. Um, from what I have seen, uh, attending board meetings for the past five years and, and, and being elected, that custom has dictated that I, any alderperson or, or mayor could add an item on the, um, agenda, and it has been, um, and Roberts Rules goes further to state that if a custom is to be changed, it can only be changed by point of order or a majority vote of the, uh, Board of Aldermen, and that is on page nineteen of Roberts Rules of Order, the eleventh edition, and, um, from my knowledge, there's not been any point of order, um, overturning this custom, and there's not been a vote by the Board of Alderpersons to, um, reject this custom, and, um, it further goes on to state that, um, if, if it is overturned by a, a point of order, that the, um, Board of Alderperson can add or amend by s- by standing order or, uh, by law provision to, um, continue that, that practice of, of, or that custom, um. And finally, uh, Roberts Rules of Order states, um, that any standing rule can be adopted by a majority vote without previous notice provided that it does not conflict with or amend any existing rule or act of the society, and that's on page eighteen of Roberts Rules of Order, and, um, as I've mentioned previously in an email, standing orders take precedence over Roberts Rules of Order, and that's, uh, why we're, uh, going about this in this manner. And that's all I have.
Alderman Thomas? Alderman Thomas? Do you have, okay. Your hand was raised.
Oh, no, I didn't take it down, so.
Okay, that's okay. All right, is there further debate or discussion around this particular motion? Okay, all right, with there being no further debate and there being a second?
I have a point of order, I have a point of order. We've repeatedly said there's no comments in the group chat, and there continues to be, so I would just like to remind all the, um, participants in the audience that the group chat is for the alderpersons to write, uh, any motions that they have, it's not for public comment, and, um, if it continues, we will make a motion and have you removed, uh, from this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, with there being no, um, further discussion or debate, I will close, um, the discussion and debate, and, um, at this time, Fran, can you conduct a roll call vote, um, for a motion for the Board to adopt standing orders three point five and three point six regarding agenda procedures?
Okay, Alderwoman, excuse me, Alderwoman Reed?
Yes.
Okay, Alderwoman West?
Yes.
Alderman Carroll?
Yes.
Alderman Thomas?
No.
Alderman, okay, Alderman Christian? Alderman Christian, I'm starting my voice back now.
Let me see if he's still on the call. I know his battery was getting low.
Okay, Alderwoman Dales? And Alderwoman Avon Elliott?
Yes.
Okay, so we-
All right, how many?
We got four yes, two absent, one no, and one no as, one abstaining.
Okay, so four yeses, okay, um, with the majority of the Board, um, indicating a yes, the motion passes. Um, we are moving forth with, um, the next agenda item, which is, um, the Sergeant at Arms Assignment, Alderman Carroll. Um, excuse me, before you proceed, um, Alderwoman, um, Fran, could you please, we have made a request and as the Chair, um, I am also the Sergeant at Arms, and I'm asking for this Tracy person to be sit in the waiting room because that person continues to disregard our request to not engage in the chat. Thank you.
I would like to move to table the Sergeant at Arms Standing Order for the for the August twentieth Board of Alderpersons meeting.
Is there a second to approve the, um, tabling of the Sergeant at Arms Standing Order for August the twentieth Board Meeting?
Alderwoman West, I second.
Okay, it has been moved and properly second to, um, move and table the Sergeant at Arms Standing Order for August the twentieth Board Meeting, um, Alderpersons Meeting for the debate in question. Seeing no hands, we will move forth with, um, a roll call vote, um, Fran. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderwoman West?
Yes.
Reed, Alderwoman Reed?
Yes.
Alderman Carroll?
Yes.
Alderman Thomas?
No.
Alderman Chris- Christian, is he back? Okay, uh, Alderwoman Dales? And Alderwoman Avon Elliott?
Yes, um, let me, okay, hold on, just one minute. We can move forth with the next agenda item, but, um, I want to indicate maybe, let's go with a nine thirty-nine for extra for Jim Christian because I think, uh, he's lost connection, so you can have it for your records. Um, the next agenda item, um, um, we're, um, Alderwoman West, the naming of the Ad-Hoc Committee to Best Practices and Procedures Accountability Committee?
Thank you. A couple of meetings ago, I, um, shared with the Board and the citizens that uh, I had started a committee, had talked with Chief of Police, um, when Michael Brown was murdered, and we decided to come up with a committee to review the, um, practices and procedures, uh, for the Police Department, um, including excessive force and other practices, and so I wanted to give a name to that committee, which is the Best Practices and Procedures Accountability Committee. If you want the names of the people who are on that committee, I would give them, um, after my motions, I've moved that this be, uh, that the Best Practices and Procedures Accountability Committee be adopted as one of Belle Fountain Neighbors Standing Committees.
Alderman Christian for the, I mean, Alderman Carroll for the second.
I second.
Um, for the debate, it has been moved and properly second, is there any questions or debates at this time? All right, seeing no hands, um, I would like to, to get a vote, a roll call vote on, um, renaming the Ad-Hoc Committee to, um, let me make sure I get the title correctly, um, to the Best Practices and Procedures Commission, um, I'm sorry, Best Practices and Procedures Accountability Committee, um, as a standing committee. Fran, can you conduct the roll call at this time, please?
Alderwoman West?
Yes.
Alderwoman Reed?
Yes.
Okay, Alderman Carroll?
Yes.
Alderman Thomas? Alderman, Alderwoman Dales? And Alderwoman Avon Elliott?
Yes.
Okay, we have four yes.
Okay, with the majority of the Board voting for, um, the name change for the committee, the motion passes. Um, the next item on the agenda is, um, Commission Vacancies and Renewals, um, and, um, I guess I can, uh, refer to the Board for this discussion, um, but this was on the agenda because of the, uh, vacancies that exist, although we've motioned after, um, I actually motioned after, uh, the General Board Meeting, the General Election, which was moved to June for there to be appointments, and there are still or no appointments made to the committees that support the work of the city, so, um, just so you know, um, the floor is open to discuss those vacancies and any concerns for a follow-up that can be provided to Fran for our, our future meeting.
James Carroll, have a C M raised.
All right, Alderman, um, no, Alderwoman West, you're actually first, Alderwoman West, proceed.
Okay, uh, I'll speak on behalf of the Parks and Recreation, uh, Board. They are in need of people to come in and bring in fresh and new ideas in order to increase participation at the Rec Center. Right now, due to the COVID virus, there is low participation as, which is understandable. However, we need programs that will, um, I'm sorry, that will be of interest to people across the board, young, old, uh, various ethnic groups, whatever, and so if you have any ideas, uh, about any programs that can be included at the Rec Center, please get in touch with Martha or Amy, I think Martha does the, uh, programming for that. Um, also, I attended their first meeting after the virus, uh, pandemic, and they are in need of a chairperson, and so I want to volunteer as temporary chair to the Parks and Rec Board until they can elect someone, and thereby being, uh, also an automatic rep. And so that concludes mine.
Um, Alderwoman West, um, given there is no ordinance for the automatic rep, do you want to serve as a volunteer automatic rep and make a, a motion for those two items that you recommended so the Board can vote on it? Aldo, I think you muted yourself, are you muted? Okay.
Then I serve as automatic rep for the Parks and Recreation Board, and also that I serve as temporary chair until someone, uh, can be appointed.
Um, um, is your hand up for the second or are you?
I have a question, sorry, but about the discussion.
Okay, do you want, do you want to, um, second her motion before we continue the discussion? It's just a, a, a motion within the discussion.
Yeah, I second, I second.
Okay, um, so it's been moved and properly second, is there any discussion or debate? Alderwoman Reed, do you have any, um, conversation for the debate, or I know that you had your hand up for other discussions around this topic? Are there any debates?
Yeah, I would, I would like to, um, actually amend, um, Barbara's, uh, Alderwoman West's motion to, um, be the volunteer, um, like non-commissioned Chair of Parks and Rec Board and the automatic rep, you know, until someone is found to chair it.
Okay.
I can-
Okay.
Okay, all right, it's been moved and properly seconded for, um, Alderwoman West to serve as the, um, the Representative for the Alderman Board and Temporary Chair into such a time, a non-commissioned Chair Member, um, until such a time that the position is, uh, properly filled, um, through the recommendation of the mayor. Um, for the debate, any debate on that particular area? All right, can you, is it possible for you to type that into the, the- All right, can you, is it possible for you to type that into the, the chat for Fran, please? Alderwoman Reed, um, so there's no hands up for the debate. And so, um, I'll just do it as a, we can do a roll call vote as before. Um, and then I can restate it, um, the motion after Alderwoman Reed types it in. Fran, could you conduct a roll call vote, please?
Alderwoman West?
Yes.
Alderwoman Reed?
Yes.
Alderman Carroll?
Please move that person, Jordan. This is Jordan.
Alderman, um, where was I? Carroll, Thomas?
No.
Alderwoman Dale's? Alderwoman Avon Elliott?
Yes.
Okay, you got four yes.
Okay, the majority of the Board has approved a temporary appointment. Um, did you put that in the chat?
It's, it's going, it's slow though.
Okay, um, a temporary appointment of Alderwoman West as Alderperson Rep and Chairperson, uh, non-commissioned Chairperson for, um, the Parks and Rec Board. All right, next item on the agenda.
I had a question.
Um, we, we passed that particular section, but when we-
Not on that.
Oh, okay, back on the committee topics? Um, go ahead and proceed because we were still on that section.
You made a statement, right, but you made a statement earlier that we was gonna be finished at nine forty?
No, mm-mm, no, no.
Somebody say that, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, sir, no, we, we just be doing city business, so that takes as long as it may take. But if, yeah, any point that you need to excuse yourself, please, um, let Fran know and she can have it recorded for the minutes. Um, and thank you for your patience because I know you're still recovering possibly. Um, the next item is, okay, still on the topic of the committees.
Yes, um, and maybe I'm, I'm not remembering it correctly, but to do, um, ask the City Clerk if she is going to provide us with an update of all of vacant, all, everybody who's on the commissions when their terms expire and, and any vacancies. I know we got one, um, at, right after the first, uh, the, the June election. Um, I thought I recalled an email saying that she was gonna revise it again, so I, I don't know. And maybe, like I said, maybe my memory is not serving me correctly, if that's the, the final version.
At that point, oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, I'll, I'll proceed, um, City Clerk.
At that point, uh, that was the final version, but it's no problem. We can go back and look at it again.
Go ahead, Alderman Carroll.
I, I, I mean, she doesn't, I don't, um, if you could, instead of, I don't need a revision. I was just wondering if that was the final one or not, because like I said, I thought there was a email saying she was working on another one. I just want to make sure that that was, that last one that we got is, is the most current.
Let me go back and, um, look at what you got, but I'm almost sure, Carol, Alderman Carroll, that that was the final version because we were having problems with one of those commissions, but then we found it. So let me look at it and then I'll reply to Martha.
And please note, I do recall Alderwoman Reed indicating in the email that a item was, uh, some information was not properly documented for a, a committee. So you might want to review, and it's my understanding that we have had individuals to resign that have not been brought before the Board, um, as far as, um, information and knowledge.
Right.
Um, Alderwoman Reed, do you have any dialogue around the, um, commissions and vacancies and any other concerns around that topic?
Yeah, I was actually going to ask if you could ask, um, City Clerk about, um, you know, reviewing it possibly with the chairs or the closest thing to a chair. Um, I mean, I know Parks and Rec Board did not have a, a person on there. So some people that I know are listed are not real active members of those Boards. On a couple of the Boards, um, it's a lot less than what we.
Right, so that's why I said I'm gonna go back and look because as Alderwoman Avon Elliott just stated, we are aware now that some, some of the Boards have, some of the people have withdrawn from the Board. And I didn't know that until I just saw that in the email. So I'm gonna go back and look at all of them and then give you guys a brand new list.
Okay, um, um, Chair, can you possibly, uh, get like a ETA on that? Are we looking to review this, um, at the next Board Meeting, next Thursday or in September?
Well, we are really past the due date and based on, um, based on the resolution, the essential resolution, he is expected to provide, um, appointees to the Board by a certain timeframe. Is that correct, Alderman Carroll?
Yes.
Okay, so that is unfortunately the only way to move things along because we have, we are past the deadline. If you are, remember, I made a motion to allow some time after election and we're past that. So, um, so hopefully we can get an update and a review of all of the vacancies in preparation for, um, us to vote on it. I did ask, um, our City Clerk to sit with the Mayor and possibly go through, um, those items. We do have someone, um, we do have a resident, Ebony Williams, who have expressed interest in two commissions. So, um, we should be getting resumes and information and applications for her. So if there are any other individuals who want to be a part of a city commission and really have the heart and interest to make some improvements and support the work of the Mayor and the Board of Aldermen, um, please refer to a website for application that can be sent directly to Fran or your Alderman. Um, is there any further discussion around commissions, Alderwoman Reed? Is there any other comments?
Well, that's, yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, um, we have on the agenda, uh, removal of committee members and I would like to, um, ask Alderman Carroll to take on the position of Chair so I can review, um, this particular section based on the concerns that, um, needs to be addressed in this area too. So there is unfortunately a lot of difficult decisions that's being made tonight on the basis of ongoing concerns. Okay, thank you. So, um, this particular topic, um, I know that you all may be aware because I have included you on, um, communications, um, from the Youth Commission Chair. Um, so you've been on the communication, you've seen the chat that I forwarded after, uh, one of our first Zoom meetings where the person directed direct, derogatory, I'm sorry, derogatory statements towards me along with, um, when, when this person has been requested to do something on behalf of the city, on behalf of the Alderperson, um, there has been, um, unprofessional dialogue and responses, some of which the person has apologized for. But just recently, these are items that can be sunshine request issues. The person was simply, the Chair was simply asked a simple question of how much was spent on the item, when was it Board approved? Because the, um, there was not any items in the agenda showing that it was Board approved. Um, I had to sunshine requests from the City of, um, City Clerk in order to get the information, which makes no sense while Alderperson has to try to sunshine requests to get information. And the update is that, um, a Board Member, a Youth Commission Board Member received $200 in petty cash and no receipts have been, um, provided even though, um, and they have been requested at this point. So the person refused to answer and they started to engage in the debate. All I did was simply, simply continue to just politely ask for the information and so forth. This has been an ongoing behavior. The person has come to Board Meetings and called themselves, uh, directing negative comments to the Board at that point and on social media. All of these are non-decorous behaviors that are not appropriate for someone that we voted to serve in a capacity, uh, on our behalf. So I will, um, be making a recommendation to the Board that we, um, remove the, uh, Chairperson of the Youth Commission and for the Youth Commission Members to identify a temporary Chair that they would then provide to, um, the City Clerk, uh, for our review and, uh, vote on, on that particular one. So, um, I would like to move to remove the Youth Commission Chair for misconduct and failure to fulfill information requests of Board of Aldermen. That will be my first motion, um, that I will be asking for a second on and then I will, uh, reread my second motion at the conclusion.
Okay.
Yes, it's there.
Okay. So it's been, uh, moved to remove Alicia Smith as Chair for misconduct and failure to fulfill information requests of the Board of Aldermen.
Yes, uh, uh, I just want to make a point of clarification, um, all city, all non, um, all appointees and elected officials are non-employees of the city and all recommendations, um, and dismissals can be done publicly because we are not considered employees. So, um, this person would have to be named, they were named when we made the vote to put them in the position and then they will receive a notice, so.
Is there a second?
Alderwoman West, second.
Okay, so it's been moved and properly seconded to remove Alicia Smith as Chair of the Youth Commission for misconduct and failure to fulfill information requests of the Board of Aldermen. Is there any discussion, Alderwoman Dale's?
Well, this illegal meeting, um, the conversation, um, when the individual told the person of asking them to be removed that they were rude, that person think that that's some type of, I, I don't, you, I, I, I can't even explain it, but for this illegal meeting, um, shame on you Miranda, for the things that you were doing to Alicia, shame on you. No, you stop, shame on you Miranda.
Uh, Alderwoman.
Shame on you.
The member's out of order, the member's out of order, Alder.
Point of order. She should be here, she should be here to, she should be here.
The member does not refrain.
She is out of order, to lie to that girl like that.
Member does not.
That is wrong, shame on you.
City Clerk, I would like to name Alderwoman Dale's and put that in the meeting minutes. Alderman Thomas?
Please.
Hello?
Go ahead, proceed, please.
Yeah, it's Alderman Thomas, third ward, uh, this illegal meeting. And it doesn't appear that, uh, Alicia is, uh, present or was notified to answer to any charges. And again, this is an illegal meeting. And that is all I have to say at this point.
Alderwoman Avon Elliott?
It's a clown show.
Yes, I would like to make the point that, um, prior to this meeting, I shared with the entire Youth Commission that decisions. Could you mute that person? Okay, I'm sorry. If, if while I'm talking, everybody can be muting, you just unmute the boy, the Board, then it might work. Um, prior to the Board Meeting, because there has been several conversations by myself or the Alderpersons about the behavior. Um, prior to this Board Meeting, I sent an email to the entire Youth Commission with Fran included and indicated that there will be some decisions related to Chairpersons and Commission Members, and if you would like to attend, please come and attend the meeting. Fran can vouch for that. In addition to that, if you have directly communicated with the person about their behavior and concerns, this is the opportunity to use your legislative power and debate for the reason this person should continue. Arguing and saying something against another Alderperson for their personal decision that we have as legislators is not the appropriate way to engage in debate. So if there is something that someone wants to speak on behalf of this person, any other Alderperson, they have the right to do that. There is not an Alderperson that is saying that this person has not engaged in this behavior. So once again, just as the other motions around other behavior, that no other person has said that those things were not violated. When we have behaviors such as those, we have to address them because it's not effective for, um, the purposes of managing the city operations. That concludes my debate.
Alderwoman.
Did you say West, don't start?
Yes, Alderwoman West, proceed.
Thank you. Uh, my concern is not so much as behavior as it is, uh, when there is a city event and city monies are used, everybody is required to submit receipts for the money that is spent. Uh, and when you refuse to do that, that becomes problematic to me and that's my concern.
All right, Alderwoman Dale's?
Fans of Alicia, um, these are lies, um, it, it, I, I, I'm, I'm assuming that at one time it might have been, um, maybe a friendship relationship. I have never known any Board, the, the Youth Commission, when they spend money, they never go to the Board to ask permission to spend a dollar, ten dollars, five dollars. Um, just like when I have my black history, I have money that I have and I have money that I raise and I spend it accordingly. Um, it's unfair that an elected official would say things that are not true about someone who puts in time for the Commission when we need to get people on the Board. Um, I understand now why, um, the individual stating these things was put off the Board by the previous Mayor because of the things that she did. Uh, but when it's lies, it's, it's, it's unfortunate. It's unfortunate that you would lie on a constituent in your own war. It, it, it's just ridiculous. So in her defense, she has been lied on, she will not be removed from this illegal meeting. She will continue on, on the Youth Commission and she will continue to work hard bringing forth things for the City. And, um, again, this is out of order, this is an illegal meeting and it's sad that an individual would actually lie on a person in a meeting. It's unfortunate. Sad.
Alderman Thomas?
Yes, uh, Alicia is not here. And there's always two sides to a story. If, and I don't know if it was a misunderstanding of receipts that she does have, that she just didn't give them, but I think everyone accused should have their, should have their time. Uh, if an investigation was ensued, the, uh, findings of the investigation should be presented. And since this is an illegal meeting, uh, Alicia will continue to serve on the Youth Commission. Thank you, that's all I have to say at this time. In her defense.
Anyone, anyone else, Alderwoman, I'm sorry, are you finished? I'm sorry.
Now I'm lowering my hand.
Oh, okay. Alderwoman West, do you have a comment or you just forget to lower your hand?
No, I just have a question, uh, to the, um, Alderpeople who continue to stay on this illegal meeting.
Direct your questions to the Chair, please.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I received my question.
All righty, thank you. Can you lower your hand, please? Uh, Alderwoman Avon Elliott?
Um, this is not for debate, this is for, um, evidential purposes. If the Alderman will refer to the emails that was forwarded with, um, the Chair's, um, comments per my request and the other email that, um, was a copy of the chatroom, those are your evidences of the communication, that it, the communication exchanges that, um, she was texting indicated was unprofessional. And her reply was that as a- And her reply was that, as a citizen, she had the right to engage negatively. And my expression to that was that, as a citizen or a neighbor, we should never engage in a negative way. And that continued a negative dialogue as well from that statement. So in her mind, it was justified to engage in a certain way with elected officials with, with, without a regard to the role of a commission leader in the city of Beaufort.
Are there any other questions, debate? All right, Harry Nunn will do a roll call vote to remove Alicia Smith as Chair of the Youth Commission for misconduct and failure to fulfill information requests of the Board of Aldermen.
Okay, Alderman Carol?
I abstain. I have a personal relationship with her.
Okay. Alderwoman Dales? Alderman Thomas?
No.
Alderwoman West?
Yes.
Alderwoman Reed?
Yes.
Alderwoman Avon Elliott?
Yes.
Yeah, three yes, two no. Well, one abstaining, one no. And one no, yes.
Majority of the Board of Aldermen have approved the motion to remove Alicia Smith as Chair. With three voting yes, one abstaining, or one voting no, and one abstaining. I'm sorry, I'm lost. So do you? Are you taking back? Are you gonna take back over now?
No, I had a second motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. That's it.
My second motion, I would like to make a motion that the position of Youth Commission Temporary Chair be, recommendations be submitted directly to the City Clerk and forwarded to the board for review and approval at the next general board meeting.
It's been a motion that the position of Youth Commission Temporary Chair recommendations be submitted directly to the City Clerk and forwarded to the board for review and approval at the next general board meeting. Is there a second?
Alderwoman Reed, second. Alderwoman Reed?
Okay, Alderwoman Reed, second. So it's been moved and properly seconded that the position of Youth Commission Temporary Chair recommendations be submitted directly to the City Clerk and forwarded to the board for review and approval at the next general board meeting. Are there any questions or debates? Alderwoman Avon Elliott?
I'm sorry, I've already expressed my debate.
Alderwoman Dales? You're on mute. You're on mute. We can't hear you.
I object to all of this in this illegal meeting. Alicia will stay, will stay on as Youth Commission Chair. It's unfortunate that that, that, that certain people go to such low standards. It's, it's just unfortunate. She's a good chair, and she's gonna continue working and bring the best things there are to the city. And the thing, the, 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 the surprising thing about it is that she actually goes to the meeting. She actually shows up and does the work. I cannot say that for the person that asking her to be removed. I have the letter. She was put off because she never showed up, never does anything because of mess. But I object to all of this illegal meeting. Thank you.
Alderman Thomas?
Yes, again, I refer to the resolution where we're directing the mayor to fulfill these provisions by September the third. But it appears that we are stepping in front of him to do the job for him. But again, this is an illegal meeting, and none of this will come to fruition. And that's all I have to say at this time. And Alicia is a good person. She does work for the children. And that's all I have to say at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderwoman Avon Elliott?
I would like to make a point of clarification. She will be able to continue as a member of the Youth Commission. So hopefully, for the next person, we may have some things in place for proper training and professional engagement and understanding of requests per the resolution. None of the decisions as being made tonight undermines that of the mayor. It only allows things to go forward that we have consistently asked him to fulfill. So anyone in a temporary position is there until the mayor makes this appointment. We are now going on additional months. Past June, we are now in August, where I made a motion that the board approved for him to make appointments, and there are still no appointments. As it relates to the Rec Center Director seat, it is going on a year for that position not to be filled. So unfortunately, in order to move forward city business and take care of things necessarily under our authority and power, we have to take measures to move things along and deal with any behaviors that's unbecoming of the city and unproductive to getting things done. Anytime information is requested, if the citizen sunshine requested the information, right now, we will be in violation because that information has not been provided. And as of last Thursday or Friday, in a cert, the clerk can attest, I sunshine requested the information, which means as of today, we are past that time. And if I filed a sunshine request violation, we would indeed be in violation because the commission chair refused to provide simple information and, and decided to instead engage, engage in a debate that I'm out of transparency forwarded to the board so they can be, be aware of the behavior for a decision to be made. We are at this point, based on the several emails and communication, where it has been stated that we have extended grace numerous times, not knowing a process of censuring and other things to rectify the behaviors that have existed on this board. We do have Alderpersons who have violated in a way that requires censuring, and we may proceed with those things as well in the future. But we have to prioritize for the purposes of the business of the city and for the individuals that we represent, which are the citizens. So that is the end of my debate. As to what I mentioned before, we are doing things in a manner to move forward in, in a more productive way.
Is there any other questions or debate? Harry Nunn, I'd like to do a roll call vote that the position of Youth Commission Temporary Chair recommendations be submitted directly to the City Clerk and forwarded to the board for review and approval at the next general board meeting.
Alderwoman, Alderwoman Reed?
Yes.
Alderman Thomas? Alderwoman Dales? Alderwoman Avon Elliott?
Yes.
Alderwoman West?
Yes.
Alderman Carol?
I abstain. I have a personal relationship with her.
I got my mic muted. No.
Okay. Alderman Thomas, no. You have three yes.
A majority of the Board of Alderpersons has made and passed that the position of Youth Commission Temporary Chair recommendations be submitted directly to the City Clerk and forwarded to the board for review and approval at the next general board meeting. By a vote to three yeses, one no, and one abstaining. I relinquish the chair to Alderwoman Avon Elliott.
Okay, Alderman Carol, to begin the discussion on standing committees and nominations, could you proceed?
I would like to table this as, because Alderman Christian has been the one that's been doing the, the work on this. And I would like to table it until tomorrow's meeting.
Can I, can I share an update? When he exited and said that his communication was dying, he did indicate that whatever committee that was selected for him, he was fine with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, then I withdraw that motion. And then I would like to make a motion that we make nominations to appointments. Here, let me type it in. I move that we make recommendations and appointments to the four standing committees of the Board of Alderpersons.
Is there a second?
Alderwoman West, second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded for the board to make recommendations and appointments, appointments to the four standing committees of the Board of Aldermen, which includes Ways and Means Committee, Personnel, Public Works, and Legislative for the public. For a point of information, Alderman Carol, if you can, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Have you already put this to the board, or is it pending?
What you mean?
I mean, have you already said that it's been moved and seconded? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that part.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, I did. And I was just making a point of information that we had three individuals to reply to the survey if you wanted to record their interest.
Yeah, let's do this.
Okay, Alderwoman Reed, Ways and Means, then Personnel.
Okay.
Because we'll end up serving on two. Myself was those same two. So we would not have heard from Wes, Thomas, and Dales, and I guess Christian said he was fine with whatever, and then Chapman would have to be assigned as well. Go forth, Alderman Carol.
Could we kind of do a round robin and just ask everybody where they'd like to serve?
We can do it for the, let's go with the individuals that you don't have information for.
Okay.
Okay, Alderman Thomas, is there a standing committee that you would like to serve on? Alderman Carol, could you restate the activities? Do you have that in front of you, the activities? That's okay. Okay, state the activities for each one.
You want me to read the whole thing?
Just a kind of quick overview of what they would be doing.
For the finance, you'd be examining the city's finances for proper management and audit purposes, reviewing the mayor's yearly budget and offering recommendations to the mayor, investing and reporting on all matters pertaining to revenues, public debt, interests, appropriations, and dispersments of all city departments. All bills, claims, and accounts shall be presented to this committee for inquiry should additional review be needed outside the regular bills over 500% of the, presented at the regular Board of Alderpersons meeting, reviewing the duties and job description of the city collector and city treasurer as needed, and establishing an online portal for financial review by the citizens of the city. The legislative, you would be examining proposed legislation, reviewing the city code as needed to ensure all sections are up to date and constitutionally sound. Prepare resolutions, examine and review as needed the code of conduct, standing orders, or any other internal business of the Board of Alderpersons. Ensure all members of the Board of Alderpersons are trained on Robert's Rules of Order and General Decorum. Reviewing the duties and job description of the chief police as needed, and reviewing any collective bargaining agreements presented to the city. Public Works, you would review equipment purchases, requests of all city departments, review the city's responsibility to the residents on snow removal, waste pickup, and facility maintenance. Review and make recommendations on maintenance of existing city streets, buildings, and properties. Reviewing the duties and job descriptions of the director of Public Works, city engineer, and building inspector as needed, and reviewing the occupancy and property codes of the city. For Personnel, you will be reviewing employee pay schedules and scales, review human resource policies of the city, review and recommend updates to the personnel handbook, review insurance and benefits for city employees, create a disciplinary code for all departments within the city, review resumes and recommend to the mayor potential candidates for city employment that are not directly under the supervision of a department director, and recommend discipline as needed.
I'll wait for the legal meeting, and then I'll decide. Thank you.
Alderwoman Dales, do you have a standing committee of interest?
Probably no for this illegal meeting. And also, I would like, I, I have a question for the City Clerk. Can I state it now, or can I, do I need to do it later?
Is it related to appointments of the standing committee?
It's related to the votes. No, it's not.
Okay.
I may need to, I, I need to ask a question.
You can, you can, you can see, on the chat, you can do a, a direct communication to Fran and ask her a question through that format.
Actually, I want to state it out so the citizens.
But if it's unrelated to this particular topic, then that...
It's a point of order. It's a point of order. I'm sorry. It's a point of order. I really need to ask.
I'm not, but I'm not recognizing. I'm not recognizing your point of order at this time. So if you can chat some, send her something through that chat, then she can follow up with you.
I won't. I won't.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
She did not state what her point of order was.
I, I understand. Alderwoman West, is there a particular? What's your point of order?
My point of order is that I would like to ask the City Clerk a question regarding voting.
Regarding voting?
Uh huh, regarding the recording of the votes.
Okay, we can, we can save your, your inquiry to later.
I may have to leave, so if you...
Okay, send her, I'm not accepting your point of order. Could you please refer to the chat and ask her directly?
I, I'll, I'll wait until you accept it because I really want it for the record.
Okay. Alderwoman West, are there particular, is there two committees that you have of interest?
Well, this is gonna work the stew out of me, but I think Public Works and Personnel.
Okay.
Or do we have enough one? One each one of those?
No, so you will be, so right now, you will serve as the one person, myself as the four, and Reed as two, and we would need to assign someone for, from the third ward in order to sit in their seat. I mean, in one, either one of those.
Okay.
Okay, so. All right, Alderman Carol, is there? I mean, we can proceed with making a motion on the individuals who are here, and I mean, including Alderman Christian, who expressed that any committee was fine with him. But we will know what committees are remaining vacant after we vote on the individuals who have indicated their interest.
Okay, I'm sorry. I need to know that Alderwoman West say Public Works, and what else?
Aldo.
I'm sorry, I was muted. Personnel.
Personnel. Okay, thank you.
And may I make a point of order?
What's your point of order?
The point of order is we have Alderpeople who are... The point of order is we have other people who are floating in and out of the meeting.
Yes.
And so, you know, for me, they should be counted as absent if they're not going to participate in the meeting.
That is correct. Um. All the woman, Dales, do we have your full participation?
Point of order, okay, let me make myself crystal clear.
No, I was just
What you see, it doesn't matter what I'm doing, okay? I'm in the meeting. I'm in the illegal meeting, so please, you cannot question what I do. Okay?
All the woman Dales, it did not require that statement, but we do not see you on the screen going back and forth. And when motions are called, individuals are not participating in the vote. Okay, Fran, so you have those individuals recorded? Do you have those recorded? Is there a particular committee that based on the strengths of Alderman Christian that can be recommended to be fielded? And then we can proceed with the vote for those particular individuals and allow the Alderman at the next meeting to select, or we would just vote from there? Go ahead, Alderman Carroll.
Couldn't we put Alderman Christian on Finance and Legislative?
All right, we have all of the input so far. We can go forth with the motion for everybody's commi- commission that they requested. Go ahead, you still have the floor. You can go for it.
So then what we um, hold on, I'm sorry, let me get this together here. So we have Alderwoman Reed for Ways and Means Committee, or Finance Committee, and Personnel Committee. Alderman Carroll for Legislative and Public Works. Alderwoman West for Public Works and Personnel. And Alderwoman Avon Elliott for Finance, Ways and Means, and Personnel.
Can I get a second on accepting those nominations? All the woman Wes?
Um, I don't want to make a second. I would like to remove myself from Public Works and add myself to Legislative.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Carroll, you have the floor.
I'll restate it. So then we have Alderwoman Reed for Finance Committee and Personnel Committee, Alderman Carroll for Legislative Committee and Public Works Committee, Alderwoman West for Personnel Committee and Legislative Committee, and Alderwoman Avon Elliott for Finance Committee and Personnel Committee.
Um, is there a second on those nominations?
All the woman west second.
Okay, for the discussion or debate? Um, all the woman Dales?
Point of order, I have a question for Jamie. I mean, I'm sorry, for Alderman Carroll.
You have to direct the question to the chair.
I have a question for Jamie for, this question is for him. Is that okay? Can he tell?
I'm just saying, you just have to direct it to me for me to direct it to him.
The question is for Alderman Carroll.
Okay, state the question.
Oh, thank you. Um, does the point of order take priority? Yes or no?
Um, so you, are you asking about the point of order process?
I'm asking, does the point of order take priority?
Yes, if you state your point of order and I acknowledge it, and then we go
Only if you acknowledge it, okay.
As the chair, yes. Mm-hmm. Were you able to review the video from the parliamentarian training?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Um. All the woman Wes?
Are we voting?
Um, I just saw your hand. I didn't know it's your hand.
I apologize.
All right, with no more hands for the question or debate, we will move forward with the motion to accept all of the nominations that have gone forth for the various committees with I'll just stop at that. All the nominations have been approved at this time. If we, if we would have a motion to approve them. Fran, can you do a roll call vote to accept those nominations for the standing committees that have been brought forth improperly seconded?
Okay, because we did the motion right. That was Carol made the motion and Wes second, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all the woman Wes?
Yes.
All the woman Reed?
Yes.
Alderman Carroll?
Yes.
Alderman Thomas?
No.
All the woman Dales? All the woman Avon Elliott?
Yes. Um, the last for tonight is nominations and approval of a committee investigating property maintenance issues. I'm not sure, let me look at the hands. All the woman Dale? Are you presenting a topic on this? All the woman, your hand is up. Are you presenting a topic of, um, all the woman Dales?
You're cutting, you're cutting. You're cutting out and repeating. The computer is making you say stuff twice.
Okay, it is nomination and approval of committee investigating property maintenance issues is the last agenda item on the committees in appointment.
I still have a question, a point of order. I would like to ask the city clerk a question.
What's your, what's your point of order?
My point of order is that I would like to ask the city clerk, how are the votes being presented in the meetings? Are they being, are they being presented in the minutes as failed because they don't have the proper number of votes? And is she doing that correctly? Is that the way it's going to be in the min- in the me- in the minutes?
Um, Fran, could you please answer all the woman Dales on the record keeping of the votes?
I'm trying to understand her question. Am I going to present?
I'll repeat it, I'll repeat it again. When I asked earlier, I asked, two thirds is, and you said six. Therefore, in the minutes, are you going to post in the minutes that everything that was voted by, by this illegal meeting failed based on the six, on the five votes?
Well, I think the two third is for those resolutions and things like that. The way I'm going to record this is however many vote.
Go ahead.
However, whatever per, however the person voted, I'm going to record it like that. I will refer to the city attorney as to how I do that as far as pass or fail. She can answer it now. She's here. So.
Okay, so.
And that's, and that's basically why I asked you as the records keeper?
I understand.
For the two thirds, and I asked?
I understand.
And you said six.
I know, I said honestly.
So I just want, I just want to make sure that that's for the record, since you are the records keeper.
Yeah, I'll refer that question to the city attorney if I may, because I have to get some advice on this.
It's, it's okay, Fran. We are aware of the voting process as legislators. And for ordinances, it's five individuals and that's still two thirds as the super majority. So I know that the Alderwoman is aware of how votes are taken and what requires a two third vote, which is ordinances. And so we can proceed on from there. So if there is no further conversation and dialogue, have we recorded the votes for the nominations? Because I think, oh, no, I'm sorry, I kind of got off. We were on the nomination and approval committee investigating property maintenance issues. The Alderman who brought that agenda item, Alderman Carroll, please proceed.
I have a point of order, Chair. There continues to be comments put in the dial box, so I'm wondering if our city clerk can handle this person.
Yes. I know that there was one individual that only refrained and made only one comment. And then there is another person that continues to make comments regardless of the request of the board previously. So any further comment, you can do as requested with the other individuals to place them in the, in the in the sitting room.
What point of order, point of order?
What is your point of order?
Um, the citizens always trump over. They can put in whatever they like to. These are our citizens. They can state and say whatever they want to. We work for them. If they want to call us names, curse us out, they have a right to. What we can do is say thank you for your comment and move on. We work for them. If they want to put whatever in there, they should have
All the woman Dales, I did not, you said, you asked for a point of order. I never acknowledged it and you continue talking. So what, what is your point of order?
My, my, my point of order is anything that the citizens want to put in the chat, they have a right to do that.
Okay, and, all right. As you stated, you had not attended the parliamentarian training whereby we were provided guidance.
I work for the citizens and they can say and do what they want to.
Excuse me. We are conducting business. There has to be some structure and organization. We attended parliamentarian procedures, training whereby the person directed us to restrict the chat for us to take care of a business that is not for personal use or social media area. So that is why we are restricting that area for that purpose. Based on sunshine law, you, you did attend partially that training that indicated that public comment was not even a requirement. And we have extended that because of courtesy and our interest in getting input from the citizens. But in order to conduct business, we are restricting certain things so we can do so. So we can proceed on, Alderman Carroll.
Don't read the chat. Let the people speak.
I move to informally discuss nominations for, uh, I'm sorry.
It was for property maintenance.
Right. I move to informally discuss nominations for the property maintenance issues committee.
Is there a second?
All the woman west second.
For the question or debate? All the woman Reed, Alderman Carroll? Oh, yeah, okay. Alderman Carroll, your hand is up.
On.
Is there, is there any debate or questions? Alderman Carroll, no?
No, I don't have it.
Okay, being there is no questions or debate, we will go forth with the nominations.
Anybody? All right. Anybody, anybody want to serve on this committee? This committee, this issue has been ongoing in our community for years and years and years. It's continually talked about on social media outlets. It's brought up during Board of Aldermen meetings. I've heard it several times in my listening sessions that I've, I've been holding throughout the community since I was elected. And I it doesn't seem like there's any resolution to this. I've kind of done some groundwork in this. And for the preceding year before COVID, I think there's been about 13 citations issued regarding property maintenance code violations. And we're a community where there's about 4,000 homes. So I find this number to be quite low. And the basic, the basis for, the reasoning for forming this committee is to actually kind of investigate what, what is going on? Is it a matter of not enough training with the building inspector or building department? Is it just a lack of manpower? Is it anything to do with the prosecuting attorney not bringing these citations up in court? Is it has, is it having something to do with the municipal judge dismissing that? So it's looking at basically what's going on, why, why these issues aren't being addressed in our community? And providing recommendations to the mayor and the city regarding what can be done surrounding this issue.
All the woman Wes, do you have an interest in serving on that committee? You're muted, all the woman Wes.
I had actually tried to do an ordinance, making the landlords more responsible than they are because right now, it seems legally, they have more leeway than we do as legislators. I guess I would love to serve on this committee. It's a passion of mine. I'm 70 and I won't be going anywhere. Can't afford to move. So yes, I guess I'll serve on that committee.
Um, all the woman Dales, do you have an interest in serving on that committee?
No interest in serving on a committee that's being nominated through an illegal meeting.
All the woman Reed, do you have an interest in serving on that committee?
Not at this time.
Alderman Thomas, do you have an interest in serving on that committee?
Uh, no, because this is the illegal meeting. I will wait for the legal meeting and I will follow to my services on a committee. Thank you.
Um, I don't have a problem serving on the committee. Is, will it be a committee of four or?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll serve on it.
And I would like to ask all the woman Dales to refrain from the decorous comments that you're making in the chat and the other individuals that are communicating after the board has politely
Point of order, you don't give me directions. We all have the same legal rights. I can make comments and I will continue to make them.
Excuse me.
No, you still say.
Non-decorous comments are inappropriate. We are, no one is directing anything negative to you, expressing any intentions of yours. So it is not appropriate. So my statement as the chair is asking you to refrain from those decorous, non-decorous comments that you're making in the chat room. Thank you. Um, all the woman Wes, your hand is up.
All the woman Wes forgot what she was going to say.
It's okay. All right, so Alderman Carroll, could you state those, the three individuals or whoever have, that have indicated interest? And if there are additional members that can be added later, then that can be voted on at a later time. And then we can do, you can proceed with a motion.
Okay, so I did put my hand back up, I'm sorry. So this, I think this particular committee citizen should serve on as well. Uh, but that's just my opinion, so.
Uh, but that's just my opinion, so um, I just think it would be a good idea. We all have the same problems and concerns. Thank you.
All right, Alderman Carroll?
Now, previously when we voted on this, it was for all the persons. So there was no um, discussion or anything about putting citizens on it when we voted on it and approved it.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further questions or debates at this time? All right, with no further debates, um, Alderman Carroll, can you proceed with a motion at this time? Um, Fran, will you please um, exit um, mouths? Whoever that person is listed as mouths.
Point of order, Fran, please do not remove a citizen from there.
Look, I don't want y'all to put me in the middle of this.
Please do not remove a citizen. Please do not.
You can transfer.
You know what? If you can't take him, Miranda, don't read it.
Um, this is not about taking anything, Alderman Dales.
Alderman Avon Elliott, this is free speech. They can put in the chat what they want to.
I call for a point of order. May we please proceed so that we can adjourn?
End this meeting anyway. Yes. Um, yes, we can proceed. I'm recognizing your point of order. Um, go ahead, Alderman Carroll with your motion.
I move to appoint Alderwoman West, Alderman Carroll and Alderwoman, Alderwoman Avon Elliott to serve on the Property Maintenance Committee.
Alderwoman West second.
Okay, um, roll call, well, it's been movement properly second for um, Alderman Wes. Alderman Carroll, Alderman Avon Elliott to serve on the Property Maintenance Committee. Um, Fran with the roll call.
One thing in the background.
Alderwoman West?
Yes.
Alderwoman Reed?
Yes.
Alderwoman, I'm sorry, Alderman Carroll?
Yes.
Alderman Thomas?
No.
Alderwoman Dales?
No answer.
Alderwoman Avon Elliott?
Um, yes.
Four yes.
All right, with um, how many, it's, it's four yeses and.
Four yes, one no, two not, uh, two, well, four yes, one no. One no answer and one.
Yes, um, with the majority of the board voting in favor of these appointees, um, the motion passes. Um, at this time, I would like to uh, make a statement before closing. Um, I do appreciate all of the individuals who have stayed on, um, especially our special guests that's on the call. And I want to say that sometimes we have the difficult decision of addressing issues that um, if we neglected to um, address them, it would be negligent on our part. And unfortunately, we do have um, situations where um, individuals have not properly um, been trained and, and done their due diligence in order to lead in the roles that they have. And um, tonight is a night that was very difficult and tough, but it was necessary because we have um, ongoing concerns that had not been addressed um, to the potential detriment of the city. At this time, I would like to ask for someone to make a motion to adjourn. Um, Alderman Wes' hand is up.
I move to adjourn.
Alderman Carroll?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here and now, um, we will um, adjourn at this time at ten fifty-two. Thank you.